We love you too. Yeah, we're both speaker two's. Yeah, very, very little. Well, you gotta get past all the introduction to the crowd and then...
I did a PowerPoint. Great, great.
It looks longer than three minutes.
He's banking on somebody giving him time.
Yeah, good. Mom signed up.
There you go. I'm banking his good time. You know, I've heard a lot about that. Yeah, they don't allow me to talk. And you say, "I give my three to the screen." Yeah, I probably just be like, "I know."
I didn't finish talking.
Paddlein' like a Churchill boat, right? Churchill, move on the surface, but paddle in like the dickens. We couldn't make it stop by. I would have, I would have. I think. Indiana City, you jump on one of the double planes. Person's like a, uh, Meredith Meyer. Clearly, yes. He's got her pick. He's a channel, he's confident, so he's got them. He had a ball of riot.
Folks, uh, excuse me for being so loud. I'm just waiting to get the sign-in sheet and we'll start the meeting, but while we're waiting, if I could just do a couple of housekeeping things to try to make the thing go faster and smoother and show everybody due respect. Uh, y'all have been great in helping keep the decorum in the last couple of meetings by not clapping or cheering, uh, so please, I would ask that you would do that still. Uh, also, we're gonna stick to a strict three-minute, uh, time limit on your comments in the first section, uh, and I would ask that if you have comments that pertain to the public hearing, that you not do those in the first section, uh, of public comment, as it would be kind of redundant to hear you say the same thing twice, and in the sake of time management, we would like to do that. Um, and please, you know, we're all in this, previous board members, uh, town staff, citizens, all of us are in this, to try to do the better, the best thing we can for our town. Um, so let's refrain from making any kind of accusations or personal attacks. Uh, there's been several levied at some of our board members that I, I think are unjustified and uncalled for. Um, please refrain from doing that, if you would, please. Um, and that won't set very well in the decorum of the meeting, and we would have to, um, have to see how that played out. Um, so with that being said, I'm still waiting for the, um, sign-in sheet, so your phones, if you would make sure they turn to silent, and please, uh, refrain from phone use on, on the board, as we had several comments on that last time, so we're gonna refrain from using phones up here, and if you can put your phone away, that would be great. Um, so, we're still waiting for the sign-in sheet. Soon as we get that, we'll start, and I'll call the meeting to order. Oh, you got one for everybody. Look at you. Okay. Like to call the meeting to order, let's stand for the opening, uh, prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Lord, thank you so much for all that you've given us. Thank you for our town, our citizens, our board members, our staff, all of our departments. They all, we all work so hard to try to make this a better town. Please let us come, using your wisdom tonight before you, and make the right decision for this town. Let it, it's weighed heavily on all of us, it's conscious, and I think it's made us sometimes deviate from your will. So please, guide us tonight as we go about our business, and in your name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So we've got the first section of public comment. Um, at least I've got a quick question. This says, "Public hearing." It, so is there another sheet? All right, so nobody signed up for that section, so I'm assuming nobody wanted to talk on anything pertaining to the rest of the agenda, which is what that section would be for. Um, so everybody that signed up is gonna have their say for three minutes in the public hearing aspect of the meeting. Okay, so we'll move, um, next to the adoption of agenda and consent items, and before we do that, I'd like to amend the agenda to place agenda item number 6A, the interlocutor agreement for IT services, into consent, and to remove items, uh, 6B, the financial report, item 6C, the future agenda topics, in closed session, and I would like to ask for a motion to do that.
So move.
Okay, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's adopted, and we're moving right along with things. So now we'll move in to the public hearing. Um, at this time, I'd like to ask Rebecca Brimmer, our town planner, to come and do the presentation on the, on the application.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I first wanted to kind of go over the structure of our public hearings, since they are very closely, um, related, and we felt like this will kind of make the meeting flow a little bit easier. So we were going to open the public hearing, and then staff will give our presentation, the developer will give their presentation, um, we will have the opportunity for the public comment of the public hearing, and then, of course, any questions that the board may have, and then we will close that public hearing, and then we will move to the second one, and kind of go over the same process. Um, our presentations will kind of be lumped into one, so for the second one, we really won't have any new information to give you all unless you have questions specifically pertaining to that, then we can come back up and answer that. Um, the public will have the opportunity to speak again, and of course, any questions you all may have, we'll close that public hearing, and then after that, um, that will be the time where the board can deliberate and kind of each speak and give their opinions, or ask any questions, and then we will end it with a motion for both the resolution, as well as the ordinance for the two separate items. Are you all okay with structuring it that way?
So you're gonna put both of them together, is that...
Did I explain that correctly? Okay. Yep, two hearings still, but the, after they've both been closed, then you all will have the chance to deliberate and make your motion on the items.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Yep, it can be in one motion as well, you can lump them together if you'd like.
Yeah.
Or two, however you, however you choose to do it. All right, so to start, um, the first item is the CAMA Future Land Use Map Amendment for parcels on West Corbett Avenue from RA to suburban Town Center, and this is information we've all heard, so I'll try and keep it as brief as I can, since I know that the applicant has a thorough presentation to give to you all. So they have submitted an application for a future land use map amendment. The amendment proposed would change the sites located at tax parcel ID 019494 and 027733 from RA, which is rural agricultural designation, to a suburb, suburban Town Center designation. This is one of three steps, the first being the future land use plan amendment, the second being a conditional rezoning, and the third being a special use permit needing approval for a future mixed development project, consisting of multifamily housing and commercial out parcels. These parcels of land is around thirty-eight acres, and is located directly across from the intersection of West Corbett Avenue and Belgrade Swansboro Road. The current designation is rural agricultural. Changing the designation to suburban Town Center would deem this land suitable for medium-to-high intensity uses on the 24 corridor. It is important to note that this amendment is a crucial step, um, in then being able to meet one of the four criteria required in a special use permit, which is needed for this type of development. The application for a special use permit would potentially be heard at a later date, depending on the outcome of the meeting. So up on the screen here, we have the site map. We have our future land use plan designation, as you can see, it's in green, which is the RA. To kind of give a little bit of, um, history or timeline to this point, this is the second application submittal for this request. The first application was heard by the planning board at their January 7th, 2025 regular meeting, and was denied by the Board of Commissioners at their February 25th, 2025 regular meeting. The second submittal for this application was brought before the planning board at their August 5th, 2025 regular meeting, and tabled until September 2nd, 2025 regular meeting for further review. On their September 2nd meeting, it was recommended for denial to the Board of Commissioners by the planning board. All right, and in this section of your packet, you have the application and narrative, you have an aerial map, you have the CAMA Future Land Use Map, as well as two drafted resolutions that RAS helped us with, depending on the outcome of which direction you all go. And for the second item, we have a zoning map amendment to rezone parcels on West Corbett Avenue from RA to B1 conditional zoning. Um, so Flybridge Swansboro LLC seeks a conditional rezoning for thirty-eight point nine-two acres on parcels of land identified as tax parcel ID 019494 and 027733 from RA, which is residential agricultural, to B1 business conditional zoning, to develop a proposed multifamily and commercial project. So the timeline is very similar, the only difference, um, from the first application is that the developer chose to withdraw their application when it was first heard at the February 25th, 2025 regular meeting. In your packet, you have a staff analysis, where I outline more in detail the zoning and the steps for approval, as well as more details of the development. We have our TRC comments, we have the application and narrative, we have the concept plan, which you can see here, and I will note, um, that out parcel six was removed along the highway, and the apartments were reduced from three hundred twenty-four to three hundred apartments, which they will go over in more detail. Um, we have the community meeting report, and we have the updated TIA. We also have a sealed memo and addendum from our town traffic engineer on the TIA approval, and he is here as well, if you all have any specific questions that you would like him to answer. We have our comprehensive plan consistency statement, and we also have our ordinance, um, package that RAS prepared, the first one being for approval, and the second one being for denial. That was everything I had for a brief, um, introduction. If you all have any questions, I'm happy to answer, or if you would like the applicant to give their presentation, that would be the time for that.
Does anybody have questions for Rebecca? Yeah, so if they have, could go ahead and give their presentation. So I'm gonna open the public hearing, and, uh, if you'll step up and, I'm gonna open the public hearing, and if you'll just state your name and address, please, sir.
Good evening. Good to see everyone out tonight. Uh, my name is Kyle Fountain, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Lanier Fountain and Saruzi, located at 114 Old Bridge Street, Jacksonville, North Carolina. I have been given the opportunity to introduce, uh, these hearings, as well as our presenters here today, in support of the proposed amendment, as well as the proposed rezoning. I'll try not to, uh, repeat what Rebecca's already said, or to go over too much of the same things, but as she stated, the requests here are to rezone, uh, two parcels to conditional zoning B1, as well as to amend the future land use plan map from RA to suburban Town Center. I have here today, uh, with us, uh, a few people who are gonna be presenting in support of this application. First one being Mr. Brad Schuler, out of Paramount Engineering. Also have Mr. Corey Mabus, who's the Vice President of Construction with Carolina Commercial Contractors. Also present and available for comments and questions are Mr. Tim Clinkseal, who is also with Paramount Engineering, was the engineer for this project, and, uh, Mr. Reynold Stevenson, who is a traffic engineer with D R M P, who can speak about matters of traffic. I'd like to, just in advance, thank everyone for your time, your attention, and your consideration, without turning it over to Mr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro-Tim, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Brad Schuler, I'm a land planner with Paramount Engineering, and, uh, we assisted the applicant in preparing the plans for this project. Uh, once again, here is the site location, uh, it is right next to the signalized intersection at Belgrade Swansboro Road, uh, the Team Chevrolet dealership is located next door, and the Watercrest Landing subdivision is located directly south of the site. Uh, as stated, the future land use map in the CAMA plan classifies the site and the abutting properties as rural agricultural, and the site is also zoned RA on the zoning map. Um, however, I do want to, uh, note that there is commercial zoning in the near vicinity of the site, including the properties, which are directly abutting the site on, on both sides along NC 24, uh, and because of this, much of the surrounding area is being developed in a way that is not consistent with a rural agricultural area. Uh, directly north of the site are office warehouse uses along Seth Thomas Lane, uh, next to that is a planned commerce park, which is being proposed on existing agricultural land. Uh, then next to that, in the blue area, is commercial zoning in the unincorporated area of the county, uh, which includes the new Bojangles and about thirteen acres of undeveloped commercial land. Uh, directly west of the site is more commercial land that is currently on the market, uh, it's about seven acres, and it is priced for commercial development. And then lastly, there's an attorney's office and the, uh, Team Chevrolet dealership with, uh, which directly abut the site. Uh, the development of this area makes sense, uh, Corbett Avenue, as we know, is the major commercial corridor of the town, and it consists almost entirely of commercial zoning, uh, either the B1 or, or B2 districts. Uh, in addition, uh, to the commercial development that's directly around the site, uh, this property is also in walking distance to the Food Lion Shopping Center. Uh, so it's important to note that while the CAMA plan classifies the area around the site as rural agricultural, the, uh, abutting properties that are also under that classification are actually zoned, uh, for commercial purposes, they're zoned as B1, and this includes the Team Chevrolet dealership and the attorney's office. Uh, the Flybridge site is in fact the only property in this area that is, uh, both zoned as RA on the zoning map and classified as RA on the future land use map, and because of this, uh, this section of town is simply not going to develop as a rural agricultural area. Uh, this site is being located on a, a major corridor of town next to a signalized intersection, and with access to water and sewer services, make it better suited for higher intensity development than what the RA classification, uh, promotes. Uh, that being said, um, there's still a good amount of RA land in the northern portion of the town's ETJ, which is more appropriately suited for agriculture. It's, it's not located on a major commercial corridor, and it has more limited access to water and sewer services, uh, which will result in less demand for higher intensity development, uh, being located there, and will provide a better opportunity, uh, for the, the town to preserve existing farmland. Um, RA, uh, is described in the CAMA plan as an area with working farms, and where water and sewer infrastructure is temp, uh, typically not available. Uh, it continues, uh, to state that access is typically provided by rural roads with ditches, and what I think is important is that these areas have little accommodations, uh, little accommodation for pedestrians. Uh, well, West Corbett Avenue is exactly where you want accommodation for pedestrians, due to the amount of services that are provided on that road. Uh, the CAMA plan, uh, even states concerns with the RA classification. Uh, the plan recognizes that it promotes an inefficient land use, or use, inefficient use of land, excuse me, uh, resulting in a lower amount of tax revenue for the town. Uh, the plan states that the RA classification may inadvertently displace residential demand and development to outside of the town's ETJ. It also states that higher density lots, which would provide, uh, will provide a greater return on investment to support the services that the town provides. Uh, we heard that there are developments being constructed outside of the town in the unincorporated area of the county, well, it's, it's likely those folks who live in those developments still come into Swansboro and go to all of the commercial services provided in the town, and in doing so, they're contributing to the traffic that we hear a lot of concerns about. However, those folks are not paying any property taxes to the town. Uh, those taxes can be used to make improvements to the existing infrastructure and to provide additional services, and that's really what the CAMA plan is concerned about here, it's, you know, just because you restrict development on the outskirts of town doesn't mean that this area is not gonna continue to grow, and that the town is not going to feel the impacts of that growth. Uh, it just means that the development is gonna occur a little down the road, uh, outside of the town's limits, and thus, will provide no property taxes in order to provide, uh, the needed services. Uh, the, the CAMA plan contains six main goals. Uh, these goals include improving the town's sense of place through, uh, balanced growth that can attract residents, visitors, and business investment, uh, managing multifamily development in locations that create a walkable, mixed-use village, utilizing conservation measures to protect wetlands and environmentally sensitive areas, encouraging mixed-use development at nodes and key intersections, connecting major designations... And I will note that out parcel six was removed along the highway. And the apartments were reduced from 324 to 300 apartments, which they will go over in more detail. We have the community meeting report and we have the updated TIA. We also have a sealed memo and addendum from our town traffic engineer on the TIA approval. And he is here as well if you all have any specific questions that you would like him to answer. We have our comprehensive plan consistency statement. And we also have our ordinance package that RAS prepared, the first one being for approval and the second one being for denial. That was everything I had for brief introduction. If you all have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Or if you would like the applicant to give their presentation, that would be the time for that.
Does anybody have questions for Rebecca? Yeah, so if they ask, could go ahead and give their presentation. So I'm going to open the public hearing and if you'll step up and I'm going to open the public hearing and if you'll just state your name and address, please, sir.
Good evening. Good to see everyone out tonight. My name is Kyle Fountain. I'm an attorney with law firm of Lanier Fountain and Saruzi located at 114 Old Bridge Street, Jacksonville, North Carolina. I have been given the opportunity to introduce these hearings as well as our presenters here today in support of the proposed amendment as well as the proposed rezoning. I'll try not to repeat what Rebecca's already said or to go over too much of the same things. But as she stated, the requests here are to rezone two parcels to conditional zoning B1 as well as to amend the future land use plan map from RA to suburban town center. I have here today with us a few people who are going to be presenting in support of this application. First one being Mr. Brad Schuler out of Paramount Engineering. Also have Mr. Corey Mavis, who's the Vice President of Construction with Carolina Commercial Contractors. Also present and available for comments and questions are Mr. Tim Clinkseal, who is also with Paramount Engineering and was the engineer for this project. And Mr. Reynold Stevenson, who is a traffic engineer with D R M P who can speak about matters of traffic. I'd like to just in advance, thank everyone for your time, your attention and your consideration without turning it over to Mr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro-Tim, Commissioners. My name is Brad Schuler. I'm a land planner with Paramount Engineering and we assisted the applicant in preparing the plans for this project. Once again, here is the site location. It is right next to the signalized intersection at Belgrade Swansboro Road. The Team Chevrolet dealership is located next door and the Watercrest Landing subdivision is located directly south of the site. As stated, the future land use map in the CAMA plan classifies the site and the abutting properties as rural agricultural. And the site is also zoned RA on the zoning map. However, I do want to note that there is commercial zoning in the near vicinity of the site, including the properties which are directly abutting the site on both sides along NC 24. And because of this, much of the surrounding area is being developed in a way that is not consistent with a rural agricultural area. Directly north of the site are office warehouse uses along Seth Thomas Lane. Next to that is a planned commerce park, which is being proposed on existing agricultural land. Then next to that in the blue area is commercial zoning in the unincorporated area of the county, which includes the new Bojangles and about 13 acres of undeveloped commercial land. Directly west of the site is more commercial land that is currently on the market. It's about seven acres and it is priced for commercial development. And then lastly, there's an attorney's office and the Team Chevrolet dealership with which directly abut the site. The development of this area makes sense. Corbett Avenue, as we know, is the major commercial corridor of the town and it consists almost entirely of commercial zoning, either the B1 or B2 districts. In addition to the commercial development that's directly around the site, this property is also in walking distance to the Food Lion Shopping Center. So it's important to note that while the CAMA plan classifies the area around the site as rural agricultural, the abutting properties that are also under that classification are actually zoned for commercial purposes. They're zoned as B1. And this includes the Team Chevrolet dealership and the attorney's office. The Flybridge site is in fact the only property in this area that is both zoned as RA on the zoning map and classified as RA on the future land use map. And because of this, this section of town is simply not going to develop as a rural agricultural area. This site is being located on a major corridor of town next to a signalized intersection and with access to water and sewer services make it better suited for higher intensity development than what the RA classification promotes. That being said, there's still a good amount of RA land in the northern portion of the town's ETJ, which is more appropriately suited for agriculture. It's not located on a major commercial corridor and it has more limited access to water and sewer services, which will result in less demand for higher intensity development being located there and will provide a better opportunity for the town to preserve existing farmland. RA is described in the CAMA plan as an area with working farms and where water and sewer infrastructure is typically not available. It continues to state that access is typically provided by rural roads with ditches. And what I think is important is that these areas have little accommodations, little accommodation for pedestrians. Well, West Corbett Avenue is exactly where you want accommodation for pedestrians due to the amount of services that are provided on that road. The CAMA plan even states concerns with the RA classification. The plan recognizes that it promotes an inefficient land use or inefficient use of land, excuse me, resulting in a lower amount of tax revenue for the town. The plan states that the RA classification may inadvertently displace residential demand and development to outside of the town's ETJ. It also states that higher density lots which will provide a greater return on investment to support the services that the town provides. We heard that there are developments being constructed outside of the town in the unincorporated area of the county. Well, it's likely those folks who live in those developments still come into Swansboro and go to all of the commercial services provided in the town. And in doing so, they're contributing to the traffic that we hear a lot of concerns about. However, those folks are not paying any property taxes to the town. Those taxes can be used to make improvements to the existing infrastructure and to provide additional services. And that's really what the CAMA plan is concerned about here. It's, you know, just because you restrict development on the outskirts of town doesn't mean that this area is not going to continue to grow and that the town is not going to feel the impacts of that growth. It just means that the development is going to occur a little down the road, outside of the town's limits and thus will provide no property taxes in order to provide the needed services. The CAMA plan contains six main goals. These goals include improving the town's sense of place through balanced growth that can attract residents, visitors and business investment, managing multifamily development in locations that create a walkable mixed-use village, utilizing conservation measures to protect wetlands and environmentally sensitive areas, encouraging mixed-use development at nodes and key intersections, connecting major designations, destinations with safe sidewalks and directing growth away from locations that flood. Well, this project incorporates all of those goals. Shown here is the comp plan. As Rebecca mentioned, we did update it since our initial submittal to remove one of the multifamily buildings and to remove one of the commercial out parcels. And in doing this, this helps us preserve a large contiguous piece of property that can't be built on under this proposed zoning. So highlighted here in red is over 16 acres. It's about 42% of the site. That will be open space and it will preserve existing wooded areas, wetlands, provide for larger stormwater ponds than what is required for this development. Site is also not in a flood zone, nor does NOAA indicate that it will be impacted by sea level rise. Development will also provide a mixture of uses connected by sidewalks, including the installation of a sidewalk along NC 24 that will connect into the existing sidewalk in front of the adjacent attorney's office and the existing sidewalk in front of the Team Chevrolet dealership. So this project will be extending that pedestrian accommodation along this commercial corridor. The development will also have to make improvements to the NC 24 corridor to help mitigate the traffic impacts, all of which would be at the cost of the developer. But also it is designed to include an internal roadway that helps limit the driveway cuts on NC 24. So overall, as it relates to the goals of the comp plan, this development will help attract business investment. It will provide multifamily housing within a walkable mixed-use development at a signalized intersection on NC 24. It protects wetlands and provides open space that can't be built on and it is not located in a flood zone. And it adds sidewalks that will connect to existing sidewalks adjacent to the site. So we are asking to amend the classification of the site on the future land use map due to the reasons I went over. We feel the suburban town center classification is much more appropriate for this property. This classification per the CAMA plan is a business district located at nodes along NC 24, which is consistent with the subject site. It also states that development opportunities may occur on green fields or underutilized sites, which is also consistent with the subject property. The classification goes on to promote commercial services that supply the community in larger geographic area. Again, this is consistent with the site as it's located on the main commercial corridor in town where those services can be accessed by the community and larger geographic area. The classification then promotes a mixture of housing, including higher density residential housing, which would include market rate apartments that have access to a major thoroughfare and existing utilities. And with promoting these uses, it adds there should be shared access sidewalks and reduced curb cuts, all of which is being provided with the plan. The town, in the town, there's only currently one other suburban town center area, which is around the Hammocks Beach Road intersection. However, much of this area is already developed and it's lacking the multifamily housing, which is promoted in this classification. So to summarize the amendment to the CAMA plan, the existing area is not currently developing in a way that is consistent with rural or agricultural development. This is likely due to the fact that this area lacks the characteristics of rural agricultural. It is not located on a rural road with a ditch. It's located on a major commercial corridor where commercial services are located to serve the community and surrounding area. It also has access to water and sewer services. Developing the site in accordance with the suburban town center classification will help create a more efficient use of land that will provide more tax revenue to the town to help pay for the services needed. As it relates to the rezoning, we are seeking to rezone the site to a conditional B1 district, which as previously highlighted, the majority of Corbett Avenue is zoned. The concept plan has been reviewed by the technical review committee. Some of the requirements we have to meet include providing a six-foot wooden fence within the buffer along the residentially zoned property to the rear of the site. Also, the design of this development provides for a lot of that open space in the rear along those existing abutting homes. So the closest building to the Watercrest Landing subdivision is over 90 feet from the property line. The stormwater facility will be designed to exceed the standards of the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality as it relates to water quality by 50%. In addition, while there is no state or local flood control requirements for this project, the pond will be designed to control up to and including the 100-year storm event, which is 11.6 inches in a 24-hour period per NOAA. So overall, with the open space that we are preserving with this project, just 40% of the site will be impervious. As noted, the site will be connecting to water and sewer services, which are highlighted here. And then one thing we did have to modify as a result of the TRC review was the fire marshal requested that we realign the second accessway so that it would directly connect to the multifamily housing in the rear of the site, which we were happy to do. And then lastly, any structure over 35 feet in height is subject to a 200-foot setback from the corridor. So any building meeting this setback would be allowed an additional five feet so they can go up to a maximum of 40 feet in height. Here's the architectural renderings of what the multifamily structures would look like. And here is the rendering of what the clubhouse will look like. Traffic impact analysis was completed for the project, which has been reviewed and approved by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. With that, the developer must make improvements to the NC 24 corridor, which again are at their own cost. These improvements include constructing new turn lanes and extending existing turn lanes along with optimizing the signal timing at both Belgrade Swansboro Road and at Queens Creek Road. And with that, I want to thank you all for your consideration. I'm going to turn it over to Corey Mavis to finish up the presentation, but thank you again.
Good evening. My name is Corey Mavis. I'm here representing Flybridge Swansboro and Carolina Commercial Contractors at 1600 Colon Road, Sanford, North Carolina. And I would like to show how Swansboro directly addresses Swansboro needs, aligns with the town's long-term planning and strengthens your tax base without strange schools and The top left of the slide represents the rental housing supply gap for Onslow County. Onslow County has a rental housing gap or shortage of 5,031 units. This information is provided by the North Carolina Chamber. The bottom right of the slide represents the median family income of Jacksonville, MSA. The median family income in Jacksonville, MSA, which includes Swansboro, is $80,807. And that is for a family. The need is real and Flybridge is built for this income profile. If Flybridge were to open today, the median rent would be around $1,500 per month. That's attainable for households earning $60,000 a year, which is roughly 75% of the Swansboro median family income. This isn't luxury housing priced out of reach. It's workforce housing designed for teachers, first responders, young adults, retirees and working families. And importantly, we're doing this without subsidies. For clarity, apartment communities are rated from a one to five-star scale, one star being the lowest and five stars are the ultra-luxury communities. Flybridge, as planned, will be a four-star community. High-quality with strong finishes and amenities, not subsidized and not Section 8. And to put that in perspective, HUD defines affordable rents as no more than 30% of gross income. Our rents will fall within that threshold for households at 75 to 100% of the area median income and remain well below ceiling even for families up to 150% of the area median income. This type of housing does not currently exist in or near Swansboro. To find a comparable Class A market rate community, people who want to work here must drive 30 minutes to Jacksonville. Flybridge brings that option here. National data shows that about 13% of multifamily households have school-aged children. In our own 408-unit community in Sanford, which is near Fort Bragg, North Carolina, we found it was even lower, around 12%. Applying the national average benchmark here at Flybridge, we'd expect about 40 households with school-aged children out of the 300 units. And importantly, those children will be spread across all grade levels, not concentrated in one school or age group. The Flybridge will add a manageable, predictable number of students that the district is already planning for. This map comes directly from the Onslow County School Board within the past year. The bright turquoise areas show where new housing is planned across the county. Swansboro is the far right edge of the map. The colored rings mark where the county is already planning for new schools. The most important takeaway is when Eastern Middle School opens in the green ring by 2029, which is the top right. The district has already confirmed it will use redistricting to relieve overcapacity at Swansboro Middle School. This slide shows the construction timeline for Eastern Middle and Eastern Elementary School, which will impact the future school capacity for Swansboro. Both are scheduled to be complete in line with Flybridge's projected build-out. That means as our, as our new families move in, the school capacity to support them will already be in place. The Onslow County School Board opened Woodland Elementary this year. This created a new attendance zone, which relieves overcapacity at Swansboro Elementary and several other schools. And it states that only elementary assignments changed, middle and high school zones remain the same. Elementary capacity concerns have already been addressed by the district. As a result, Swansboro Elementary is now projected to be 16% under capacity this school year. While we're on the topic of schools, I'd like to keep in mind that Onslow County Schools has 122 job opening positions today. Just across the bridge, they're building a 238 employment center, new hospital in Cape Carteret. And directly across the street from Flybridge, over 200 more jobs are planned. That's 560 jobs in total, all bringing people who will travel through Swansboro no matter what. These jobs are coming and people will either travel through Swansboro or Flybridge can give them the opportunity to live here and invest in the community. Here's how Flybridge aligns with the Swansboro's Economic Development Strategic Plan. The words in bold aren't mine and they're posted in every municipal building in Swansboro. They represent the town's own vision for growth. We're creating a connected neighborhood at a lit intersection with infrastructure already in place, a walkable design that supports townwide mobility and off-site traffic improvements that will benefit the whole community. We're preserving over 42% of the site as natural space, fully protecting wetlands, building an oversized BMP, its responsible infill with long-term environmental stewardship. We're designing with scale and context in mind, led with a local architect. This community will serve the very people who power Swansboro, teachers, first responders, small business owners, while activating the corridor that already exists with new commercial opportunities. We're creating 300 attainable housing, attainable homes, five commercial out parcels and town's standard infrastructure that will be annexation-ready and built for long-term growth. And from the start, we designed Flybridge to fit within Swansboro's vision. These are the calculated permit fees for just the multifamily portion of Flybridge. Because of our phasing, they'll be spread out over for two years. What's exciting about that is that one project, this one project for multifamily will generate more than double the town's forecasted permit fee revenues each year in that period. That's immediate front-loaded revenue that strengthens Swansboro's budget and supports community priorities right away. This is the estimated property tax contribution for Flybridge, prepared by Ryan, a nationally-recognized tax service firm. Their analysis shows the long-term annual revenue this project will generate for Swansboro. It's a steady, predictable source of new funding that grows the town's ability to invest in services, infrastructure and community priorities year after year. From the town's fiscal year 2025-2026 budget ordinance, Flybridge will contribute an 8.15% increase to the tax base. That's a meaningful boost, one project helping move Swansboro forward and creating new resources for the, for community priorities. This chart shows the budget year approved dollar amount, dollar change and percent change. In 2022, the increase came mainly from property reevaluations, not new development. Flybridge will create a contribution greater than the last three years combined. That means Swansboro's next chapter of growth is fueled by real investment, expanding opportunities and strengthening the town's financial foundation. Here's Medley at Northwood. This is a 312-unit apartment community we built, we manage and still own through a long-term partnership. Here's South Park Village. It's a 408-unit community in Sanford, North Carolina. We completed this in 2015. We've managed it since day one and have proudly owned it for over 10 years. And this is Symphony Park, a 240-unit independent living we built a year ago. And to be honest, I'd just like to show it off because it's one of my favorite projects and just beautiful. Each of these communities reflect the same care and commitment we're bringing to Flybridge, building quality housing we stand behind for the long term. Here's a rendering of Flybridge, a multifamily community will deliver with the same thoughtfulness and care we bring to every project. It's a place we intend to own for the long term. And since I joined our group in 2015, they've developed dozens of communities and sold only two. One was held for over 20 years and the other one was a thoughtful decision made after months of consideration when the right opportunity aligned with what was best for us at the time. And even then, it only happened because the quality of the community attracted a series of offers we just could not ignore. And across the portfolio, the average ownership span is about 15 years. These aren't short-term projects. They're legacy decisions for our group and generational commitments. Swansboro has a real housing need. And with Flybridge, our goal is simple, to be a part of the solution. We know one project can't do it all, but Flybridge is our way of making a meaningful contribution towards the solution. Flybridge reflects real incomes, real needs and real stewardship. It's attainable housing without subsidies, fully aligned with Swansboro's strategic goals and economic visions. If approved tonight, we're ready to move forward with a special use permit and if welcomed, annexation. We built the own, we built the last and we want to be a part of Swansboro for generations to come. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I'm grateful for your time and consideration and I'd be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Corey? Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation. Do you have anybody else with your operation?
No, sir, that completes it.
That's it? Okay. So that concludes Flybridge's presentation. Now, this is just- Now, this is just not necessarily on Flybridge, but on the rezoning, excuse me, or the amendment of the Kamala Future Land Use Map. So we will go to the public hearing at this point, and I would like to ask Lauren Brown. Okay, go ahead. Yeah.
Hey, do you mind stepping back up there, the engineer? I got a question for you. I'm going to talk about infrastructure for a second. I just want to see how much you guys have thought about the infrastructure issues to proceed. Though I'm concerned about the capacity for sewer, it's come up as a topic since I've been doing a little digging. Have you guys talked to Onwassa at all about the capacity that they have for a project such as this scale for three hundred housing units? If you've got a professional, yeah, bring them up, maybe the subject matter expert, if you can talk about that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. My name's Tim Klink scales, resident engineer for Paramount Engineering. Yes, we have talked on Wassa twice. We talked to them when we first started in 2023, and we talked to them in spring of this year. They've stated that there is capacity in the upgrade in the pump station in the neighborhood in the rear, and then also there's capacity in the four-inch force main that ties into the main force main out on Corporate Avenue. So yes, we have talked to them. We've talked to them twice about their operations. We've talked to their engineering manager, and they've stated they do have the capacity for this project.
The reason I bring that up is because we did this similar thing about a year ago with another project, I believe called Breezeloffs, and they're now held up in construction for stormwater issues because they didn't really think about that at the process, I think, when we decided to rezone that for that project. I just want to get...
Yeah, that's the first...
That's why I'm going to cover some of these bases.
The two things we made sure of is there was adequate water capacity for meeting the fifteen-hundred GPM for fire protection, and then also making sure we have sewer for the project. And then the third thing would have been making sure that we had the stormwater up to the, including the hundred-year event.
No, sir. No, we can't. I'm sorry. Okay, so just any... Do you have a question? Hold on just a second, please. I did, but then, do you have a question? Okay, so you can go ahead and make the comment. So first of all, I'd like to back up a little bit and regroup. So since we're in the presentation part, is anybody here that would like to speak on behalf or in favor of the project? If you are, raise your hand, and I'll have you come to the podium and state your name and address and speak in favor of it. Okay? No, okay. So that being said, Lauren, I apologize. I was wanting to get that part out of the way so we get all the presentation part out of the way first. State your name and address, please.
All right. Good evening. Lauren Brown, 504 Greenfield Place. Is my presentation going to... Oh, I just... Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm here on behalf of Common Sense Swansboro, wearing my white shirt. And Doug, appreciate the lead-in about the sewer and water issues. That is what I'm going to speak about. Disclaimer that this is my personal opinion, even though I am a consultant for public utilities, this is my opinion alone. I don't speak on behalf of my organization. You guys have probably seen this work going on. It's about ten miles of new piping and pump stations running along Highway 24. This is to provide the capacity and the upgrade that the gentleman from Flybridge spoke about because as of 2024, we were at eighty percent capacity of our current water treatment plant that's in Hubert. So knowing that there's not more recent data, and knowing that that was a year ago, and with a lot of the development that's already underway, we are hedging all of our future growth on the completion of this project to send our sewer to the Marines, Marine Corps Base to clean. Onwassa's reliance on the base for treatment capacity also creates a single point of failure. I mean, it's running along the highway, again, ten miles, and again, since we're already at very close to capacity, I just would ask the commissioners to question, what is our Plan B? If you look at the CIP, there's not funding for water treatment plant expansions outside of this piping project until past the 2030 timeline. The water treatment capacity, as I said, is already at eighty percent. The growth that we've had in sewer treatment over the past nine years alone is over a hundred percent. Onwassa is still using static growth factors, so they were planning on three percent annual, which totals, you know, ish thirty percent over ten years. And I'm not good at math, but that's a pretty big delta between thirty and a hundred and eleven.
You're at thirty seconds.
Oh, goodness. Okay. In closing, there's standards that they could put in place. I also published all of this on the Facebook page to provide more information and sent that to the commissioners for additional detail. But again, there's plenty of things that they could be doing that I hope they do. The capacity is already reached, and that is my time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lauren. And again, folks, I'm not trying to stifle anybody's... No clapping, please. I am not trying to stifle anybody's voice, but for the sake of all these names that are on this list, we'll be here for quite a while, say, three straight minutes. I'll raise my hand at thirty seconds, and that'll give you a heads-up that you've got thirty seconds left. So Jake Brown is next, and state your name and address, please, sir.
Good evening. Jake Brown, 314 North Intation Lane, Swansboro. The following is a map of Eastern Onslow County, including Swansboro. Highlighted with pins are all the sites for new housing developments. This data covers new housing units added since 2021. Not included in this data is new subdivisions that have been approved for construction but are still waiting release of permit, like the planned fifty homes on Swansboro Loop Road across from Oyster Bay. Also not shown on the map and table, which I knew the numbers would be confusing, are one-off homes being built and renovation of older unoccupied units, again, all of which have been permitted and approved for construction. With over one thousand four hundred and fifty new units, including apartments, townhomes, and single-family homes, recently constructed or under permit, pending construction, it is likely that the housing shortage problem that the developers of Flybridge keep forcing upon us is false. In addition to this data, this immediate area is experiencing strong commercial development. The Highway 24 corridor, beginning at the western edge of town and moving towards the schools, is going to continue to change and expand over the next several years, further impacting traffic and emergency services. The concern that the citizens of Swansboro have tried earnestly to communicate to this board is that Flybridge development comes on top of all these other approved developments. Despite some remarks from our elected officials and appointed board members at past meetings and in social media postings, Common Sense Swansboro is not anti-growth. Rather, we are pro-sustainable development. In closing, Common Sense Swansboro and all the people you see wearing white here tonight are not anti-growth. Growth is inevitable in coastal communities all up and down the eastern seaboard, but growth should be well-planned and sustainable. That's just common sense. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, Meredith Mayer, if you'd state your name and address, please.
Meredith Mayer, 220 Riverreach Drive. For months, you've listened to people tell you all the reasons to deny the Flybridge application, but I want to talk about something else. Initially, the developers tried to pull on hard strings and say that they would be providing housing for those who worked here but were priced out of buying. And when that didn't work, they added short-term renters. While renting makes sense for some, it might not work for those who want to eventually buy a home. Ms. Paradi, as a Realtor, I'm sure you're familiar with these pitfalls. Let's be clear, Flybridge is targeting the military and other short-term renters. The majority of folks renting will not be those wanting to lay down roots. If the town leaders really want to do what's best for Swansboro, especially our young families, the focus should be on affordable homes, not rental properties. I have some alternative facts. In researching whether this would be good for people, the developer said it would benefit, I found that the projected starting rents of fifteen fifty per month are above what these occupations can typically afford on a single income. Using the guidelines of spending no more than thirty percent of gross monthly income on rent and utilities and the average salaries for those targeted populations, unless they were sharing an apartment, only an RN working at the hospital could afford the fifteen fifty. The Census Bureau provides interesting information. For example, the average age of a citizen here is forty-three, and nearly twenty-two percent are over the age of sixty-five. We have slightly lower employment rate than North Carolina, but that may be due to the high number of veterans and people over the age of sixty-five. I want you to notice the commute time. People are living here and working elsewhere. The Census tells us that the average family in Swansboro could afford to live in Flybridge, but a single person could not. The median rent in Swansboro, including houses, is lower than Flybridge's starting rent. Seventy-two percent of people living in Swansboro own their own home. If the planning board and the Board of Commissioners believe we need a new Kamala land use plan, I want to urge you to put this vote on hold, redo the plan, and include a Housing Needs Assessment, or HNA.
You're at thirty seconds.
Okay. Excuse me. Without a formal independent HNA, we lack the data necessary to make informed decisions about whether this type of large-scale housing development is truly needed or sustainable in our town. An HNA is a comprehensive study done by the town, not by a developer, and would evaluate current and future housing requirements. It ensures development is data-driven and is aligned with long-term vision of the town.
That's your three minutes. I'm sorry.
And I want to leave you with this thought.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Okay, so no clapping, please. All right, so if we continue to clap, then we'll have to have someone escort you somewhere Mike Guthrie, name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Mike Guthrie. I live at 210 Knightshead Drive in Swansboro, North Carolina. I just wanted to bring up my opinion on this particular project. I feel like we might be losing some opportunity if we don't allow this project to come here. I'm a home health physical therapist, so I see people in their home all the time. I see a need for people to be able to go from a home to a place that has ADA accessibility, to a place that has room, that has specifications for wheelchairs. A lot of people age out of their homes, and I think this last presentation was clear that that's happening, you know, in our community. I do work in communities where there are apartments or multifamily housing that make this transition, going from a home into a multifamily facility, something that a family can do rather than going to an assisted-living facility, AKA nursing home. So as we age and as I age, I think about what we need to do to revive for our community. I think if we do not allow this in our community, we are not taking care of our community in the long term. That's just my opinion, and I wanted to bring this to you guys as a professional. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you for not clapping. I appreciate that. We want to keep everybody, you know... The next person will be Steve Land, and your name and address, please. And probably after this one, we'll probably take a break. Oh, I'm sorry. It's Rachel, but let Steve go, and then we'll let Rachel go, okay? So sorry. Rachel, let Steve go, if you would, please. Okay, I'm sorry. I jumped right over your name.
My name's Stephen Land. I live at 902 Morganture Drive. I retired from the Marine Corps and then took a civilian job at Camp Lejeune so I could fulfill my promise to bring my wife home to Swansboro. Tonight's the clearest example yet that our town is not prepared for the scale of growth being proposed. This meeting was bound to draw a big crowd. Early meetings already have proven that, but when commissioners went on social media to publicly support the development, it didn't silence people, it galvanized them. This is why turnout is larger than ever tonight, because residents are tired of being dismissed in the face of overwhelming evidence. Our town hall holds only two hundred and seventy-three people. That's just six-point-five percent of our forty-two hundred residents. If we can't even host tonight's meeting without overflow, what happens when a thousand new apartment residents arrive on top of the already approved developments? If we can't even attend a town hall meeting without having to park on the side streets, how can we expect to handle all the additional cars from residents of the new apartments? Where will these people park when they go downtown? What happens to the restaurant parking lots at 6:00 PM when they're already full? If the town, meaning its administration, services, and facilities can't meet the needs of this moment, how can we claim to be ready for a surge of residents all at once? The truth is, our capacity doesn't match the growth already approved, let alone Flybridge. The turnout tonight proves the community knows it, too. Commissioners, please vote no on Flybridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, Rachel, I'm so sorry. I apologize. Then after Rachel speaks, we'll probably take about a five-minute break. Let's make it ten because there's so many people in here. And name and address, please.
All right. Never make the microphone on this. My name is Rachel Lovejoy. I live at 210 Knightsheads Drive also, and I am blind almost completely with a guide dog, and I am a social worker. And in my field in social work, I am tasked to speak for people who cannot speak for themselves. So one thing I want to say is that the land use plan needs modified. I cannot walk down Highway 24. I cannot walk down my road in Shipwright Point. Joe Brown has seen me work with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, the services for the blind, for the last several months, trying to cross a corner in a rural neighborhood. Without changes to the Kamala land use plan, we do not have infrastructure growth. We do not get sidewalks for people to walk on. We do not have access to services in our community. People like me and the veterans in our community cannot function. We have amputees, we have PTSD, we have a plethora of disabled, retired, elderly. There's so much that goes into this when you think about redoing the infrastructure. I cannot say yay or nay to Flybridge, but what I can say is that I have done my research also, and it's going to offer one hundred first-floor ADA compliant apartments. Fifteen to twenty in the complex alone will be ADA compatible, and they're willing to help make more for people who need to live there. So that goes twenty years from now, when the retirees from the military have an amputee or whatever, they need a place to go, they want to stay in this community. It's not a complex that's going to keep growing, like this is it, it's three hundred, that's it, capping out. So either we put them here now and control the growth, or we wait till those other fourteen-hundred-and-fifty properties that the other gentleman we're talking about, and they come here anyways, and they still come off of our tax base. So you really, when you're thinking of doing the future, think of yourself in thirty years. Are you going to be able to see as well? Are you still going to be able to drive a car? Would you like to live in a community or have access to a community in the area you've lived for twenty years, where you can walk to a gym in your building, go to the pool, have physical therapy come into your home, and work with you in your home in a facility like that? And that's all I got for you guys today.
Okay, thank you very much. So let's go ahead. It's seven oh two, so let's come back at twelve after and resume the meeting, please. So we're taking adjournment. How you doing, sir? Yeah.
But we don't have to go all the way over there?
No, you gotta walk in front of it. I hate cutting you off, yeah, no, you can.
I just wanted to know if there are a lot of people out there.
Are there?
And in the lobby.
Okay.
There were lawn chairs.
Good, thank you, because I had no idea. Thank you.
Did you call the first name to speak, and then the second one? So then they could argue the other stage?
I can't.
I don't think that was called.
Oh, great.
Sorry.
I ain't young. I'm in the hot seat right here. Thank you.
What's happening?
Yeah, that's what works, we just kept having to use.
Yes.
Whose water bottle is this? That's unopened.
It's unopened, take it.
Thank you. Let's go to him, son.
This is a big show.
Can you see the way in her, she's going to press it? Yeah.
See, no. You better make that clear. Everybody else. Maybe, maybe you should. Or just this one. Talk to him. Sir.
I love it.
We have about two more minutes.
Hold on, my press is in. You don't have to.
Hey, mom. Hey, you had that sawed in again this morning.
Good to see you.
Last night, with spaghetti.
Good, eh?
It was good.
All right. Oh, I know, I know. We love her. Oh, okay.
Okay, folks, if we can start getting toward our seats so we can resume the meeting.
I have no idea. I think there's probably ten or so. Yeah, it's hard.
So, you know.
All right, folks, this, I'm trying to resume. Okay, so is Ed Benet back in the room? Yep, all right, so if you'll state your name and address, please.
Ed Benet, two-two-two South Elm Street. Honorable Commissioners and Honorable Mayor Justice, my neighbor. I'm here tonight to respectfully ask that you deny amending our land use plan to accommodate the Flybridge apartment proposal. You've heard many valid concerns from residents about traffic, schools, infrastructure, and quality of life. I won't repeat everything, but I do want to focus on one critical issue: growth. Between the 2010 and 2020 census, Swansboro's population grew from about twenty-seven-hundred to thirty-seven-hundred. That's a forty-one percent increase in just one decade, averaging three-point-thirty-eight percent growth per year. Current projections show we'll continue growing at an early three percent annually between 2020 and 2025. That is already steady, significant growth. The Flybridge project would add more than three-hundred apartments and potentially a hundred to one-thousand new residents all at once. That's not steady growth. It's a population spike of twenty to thirty percent. For a town our size that is simply not sustainable, we're already seeing new subdivisions, housing developments, and adding a massive complex like Flybridge would overwhelm our schools, our roads, our utilities, and our emergency services. What we need is not a high-density development, but responsible planning. We've talked for years about the NC-24 bypass. Let's revisit that. NC DOT data shows that NC-24 will be over capacity by a couple of decades. And the Old Hammocks Road intersection alone had forty-nine crashes in the last five years. We need to widen Belgrade Road, improve intersections, finish sidewalks, strengthen stormwater systems, and address the Onwassa water issues before adding thousands of new residents. In summary, I'm not opposed to growth. I'm opposed to unsustainable growth. Whether you were elected or appointed officials, you carry the responsibility of listening to the people you serve. We are not just a handful of residents showing up each week. We are the people of Swansboro. We love this town, and I know each of you do as well. As Thomas Jefferson said, "The government closest to the people serves the people best." Commissioners, please listen to your people. Strengthen Swansboro before you expand it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, thank you. Elaine Seofe? Your name and address. And if you're on this side over here, feel free to use this microphone over here. Yeah, you can use that one, yep.
Elaine Seofe, seven-seventeen West Phillips Drive, Swansboro. Over the past months, a steady stream of speakers at Board of Commissioners and Planning Board meetings have presented a growing list of fact-based reasons why the Flybridge proposals are bad for Swansboro. In response, some Commissioners have expressed without evidence that the no-Flybridge speakers do not represent the views of the community at large. I'm here to present some facts regarding the opposition to changing the land use map in the land use plan. Mr. Conaway was elected to the board in 2021 and received four-hundred-ninety-six votes. Mr. Eckendorf and Mr. Brown were elected to the board in 2023 and received three-hundred-eighty-eight and three-hundred-fifty-seven votes, respectively. Ms. Turner and Ms. Parati currently serve as appointed board members. Keeping those numbers in mind, when I last checked the status of the petition against the Flybridge proposals, it had been signed by five-hundred-and-ninety verified-registered Swansboro voters. The evidence to support that claim has been presented to you by the Common Sense Swansboro Group. The five-hundred-and-ninety signatories represent forty-nine percent more people than voted for Mr. Eckendorf, and sixty-two percent more people than voted for Mr. Brown. I refer to Mr. Brown and Mr. Eckendorf's numbers because they have been thus far indicated support for Flying Bridge, although I hope things change tonight. So if you really are going to take into account what the people of Swansboro want, it is accurate to say that the voters in this town overwhelmingly want you to vote no on the proposed amendment and rezoning. It is fair to assume that a good number of the folks that voted for each of you are among the five-hundred-and-ninety who signed the petition.
You have thirty seconds.
And, okay? And rest assured that all five-hundred-and-ninety signatories are monitoring how you vote tonight. They are watching to see if your vote represents their clearly stated interests or whether your vote represents the interests of Carolina commercial developers. Remember, we're not only your constituents, but your neighbors, whom you swore to represent when you took your oath of office. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So we'll have Ralph Coleman next, and either microphone you feel most comfortable with.
Ralph Coleman, Sixty Picket Court. When Flybridge LLC made their presentation this evening, they included a version of the lie posted on the website of their parent company, Caroline Commercial Contractors. The website says, quote, "We are not asking Swansboro to change its land use plan. We respect the town's stated vision of growth. What we are asking for is the land use map to be updated so that blah, blah, blah," end quote. The statement is a lie because the land use map is, A, if not the, critical element contained within the land use plan. And if you are asking to update the land use map, you are absolutely asking to change the land use plan. The "we are not asking for a change" statement is not even a clever lie. It's a transparent effort to deceive the board and the town about its own vision of future development. Preceding the Planning Board's six-to-zero vote two weeks ago, a Planning Board member, Jones, succinctly described the nature of the Flybridge amendment request. Mr. Jones stated that what Flybridge is seeking is a, quote, "transformational change," end quote. And Mr. Jones indicated that although he is, quote, "pro-growth," end quote, this sort of change should not be made without a proper land use plan review to find out if there is even a community consensus for changing the town's vision statement. When you look at the maps associated with this request, you can't just look at the parcels in question and the B-ones on either side. You have to look at the whole land use map. You'll see that the plan encourages the most intensive growth closest to downtown, particularly at the urban town centers, which are at the intersections of the two Hammocks Beach roads. That makes sense because such development is close to emergency services. The Queens Creek Node is a special unfortunate case because of the school cluster that we're stuck with. The plan does not encourage intense development there or at points west that would further tax an already problematic intersection. West of Queens Creek Road, development intensity is supposed to lessen, as is the case with the existing car dealership, the bank, library, and the current and future light industry. A high-density apartment complex on Highway 24 at the western boundary of town makes no sense from a planning perspective. It would be irresponsible in terms of both safety and efficiency to place three-hundred apartments at a location that will increase the requirement for emergency services to negotiate dense traffic to the western edge of Swansboro. traffic to the western edge of Swanspur. Flybridge did not operate with a three-minute time limit tonight, and we all sat here while they spewed whatever misrepresentations they liked without cross-examination and urged you to transform Swanspur into Sanford-by-the-Sea, but without a bypass route like the ones around Sansford and Pittsboro to relieve traffic on Highway 24.
That's your three minutes.
Please deny Flybridge's request for you to change the land use plan and betray Swanspur.
All right. Thank you. Okay, Wayne Herbert, next, and name and address, please.
Good evening, I'm Wayne Herbert, 102 Oyster Bay Road here in Swanspur. I'll start off by saying I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office which I'm about to enter, putting my best skill and ability, so help me God. Those words are quoted from the oath every elected official in this room took when they assumed their duties as mayor or town commissioner in support of Swanspur. Elected officials in this country take an oath of office to uphold the U.S. Constitution and to serve the public trust. The reason they are required to take such an oath is simple. Elected officials are not empowered to serve their own interests. They are empowered only in order to be public servants, specifically servants of the people. So here we are. The Flybridge proposal was not approved by the Planning Board comprised of Swanspur and ETJ residents in January. It was not then approved by the Board of Commissioners by a vote of 3 to 2, and the mayor cast that deciding vote due to the overwhelming public input, I believe was your quote, sir. Flybridge came back with their proposal, slightly different, but intent still on building growth by 20%. A new Planning Board, and I say new as it had three new members, voted decisively 6-0 against the Flybridge proposal. Now it comes to a new Board of Commissioners, and I say new once again because if the previously voting Commissioners vote as they did before, the mayor won't get to cast the deciding vote tonight. That duty will fall to Commissioner Parati. Mrs. Parati, I do not mean to single you out, and this is not personal, but it's the situation we find ourselves in as a town this evening. As such, here are some suggested compass points for the box decision-making process. As stated tonight, the last few months have galvanized the citizens of this town against this proposal. The Planning Board and the Board and Commissioners have heard comments from young and old, people who have lived in Swanspur for decades and those who are new to Swanspur, from current and former teachers, from professionals, from retired military residents, from single moms and parents of school-aged children at all our schools, from those who are retired, retired, and no longer work, and even from a middle school student at the last Planning Board meeting. While they all may have different backgrounds and Swanspur stories, they have all echoed the same sentiments, speaking out in opposition to this proposal. I asked the mayor recently, about a month ago, if he had met anyone who had approached him saying this proposal was good for Swanspur. He shook his head and said no. What we have heard consistently, though, from the residents that are here tonight and those who are like them, is that Flybridge is not good for Swanspur. As of this evening, as previously stated, Thomas Sense Swanspur, in-town petition started by Lauren Brown, has 590 verified registered Swanspur voters who are against this proposal. Furthermore, we know that information provided at the very last Board of Commissioners meeting says that from our county, they have no immediate plans to address overcrowding at our Swanspur schools or improve or expand impacted roads, nearby roads such as Queens Creek. So let's simply not make a bad situation worse. Let's make a good decision and not approve the Flybridge proposal.
Thank you. Okay, Jeff Brooks. Your name and address, whichever. That one, okay?
Okay, my name's Jeff Brooks. I'm at 114 Oyster Bay Road, and it's been seven months since the last yes votes were cast. We still have not heard a single coherent, rational, or logical argument for this effort. We have heard our citizens mocked, we've heard the LUP mocked, and even more insidious published public comments seemingly indicate that the developers have been worked with closer than the citizens you've sworn to represent. If you intend to vote yes this evening, you have ignored the analysis and recommendations of the Planning Board twice, ignored the overwhelming dissenting public input, and ignored the LUP both in principle and intent. All that's left are your opinions now. Critics of our land use plan now want to commit our tax money to update and rewrite it, presumably to say what they want it to say. Well, if it's a document that can be changed ad hoc, why waste our money? Does the document mean something now or not? These same critics like to cite what they claim is a small percentage of public input to discredit the LUP, given the magnitude of real-time public input over the course of the last seven months at you seemingly ignore, which is it? Ignore large public input or use what you deem as a small percentage of public input to justify your rationale? Flybridge has attempted to show consistency with LUP with respect to being bounded by B1. That is a creative reach since we're actually talking about two parcels, and if you look at them, each parcel is bounded equally by RA, so to me, that's a wash. The only other two advocates that have spoken are both highly conflicted. One literally gets a paycheck from them, the other has a rezoning interest in close proximity. Coincidentally, they both tried to scare us with chicken farms. With chickens don't drive and chickens don't attend our public schools, I say bring it on. But you say chickens don't pay taxes, and that is true, but what you may not understand is this is a perfect analogy of what these folks have been intelligently, passionately, and succinctly trying to convey to you is that is we are more than happy to trade any marginal revenue perceived real with this project for a quality of life. You will have to submit two statements tonight, one for consistency and one for reasonableness. If you vote yes, your consistency statement will have to indicate this is inconsistent with the LUP, and if it's inconsistent, it simply cannot be considered reasonable. To close, we have heard, "If you ain't growing, you're dying." Ricky Bobby logic. That is simply not true for this instance. It is entirely possible to maintain, sustain, and cultivate our town's way of life. Growth can come in many forms. We can grow closer as a community, we can grow our amount of time and resources we contribute to others, or simply grow the amount of time we spend with our families by not being stuck in traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Chris Powell. Name and address.
Craig Powell, 703 Hibiscus Court, taxpayer and voter. One thing I want to start with is saying that the size of this room couldn't hold all the residents of Flybridge. I'm not anti-growth. I'm pro-Swanspur. I moved down here in 2019 from Regina Beach, where I lived for almost 17 years. I saw what effects of unchecked growth are. Overdeveloped, horrific traffic, overcrowded schools, no additional infrastructure due to the overdevelopment. It just could not keep up. The city had to use eminent domain to move people because they moved their homes and built new homes so close to the air station that the Navy was fixing to move. I've seen firsthand the effects of unchecked growth. We've talked a lot about taxes tonight and how much the tax base will increase. Will we see a break in our taxes? Don't think so. Within five years, my prediction is we will see a property tax increase because we failed to catch up, the infrastructure failed to maintain and catch up with the growth. Proposed rents at Flybridge are greater than my mortgage. I've only lived in my house six years, and I'm the first owner. And I don't live in Squawler, you have my address. Come by and visit. I've heard about the bridge in Queens Creek being updated since I moved here. Not a single square foot of pavement has been done on that bridge to upgrade it. None. This development might work in Raleigh, or Durham, or Charlotte, or Northern Virginia, but that's not here. It does not fit the character of this town. I moved from a large metropolis down here. I tried for years to get down here, and when I was able to, I jumped at it. Why does everyone speaking out here? It's not because we're anti-growth again, because we love Swanspur. We came here for a reason, for the small-town feel, and we feel it, we see it being taken away, or feel it will be if we do not speak up. For the first ones taxed and the last ones considered. That's all I have. Thank you for your attention.
All right. Thank you. Okay, Laurent, Mayor.
Hello, Lawrence, Mayor, 220 Riverreach Drive, Swanspur, voter as well. So I actually came up here to actually speak much of what Ralph talked about, about how that area should not be B1, that this development is high-intensity, as the developer put it, high impact. A dealership is not, you know, a lawyer's office is not, that doesn't generate a lot of traffic and so forth. When you have your 20% of your population on the other edge of town, and your police and fire have to service them, that's going to be an issue. But with that, since Ralph covered that better than I could, I'm going to cover a little bit of something else, since we have traffic engineers here. The Swanspur Unified Development Ordinance is our go-to document regarding standards for building development. It also incorporates parts of the land use plan. It's the document that protects a town from things like adult-oriented businesses from showing up across the borough. After all, this is Swanspur, not Amsterdam. There's one thing I'd like to highlight here, which is the Flybridge traffic analysis. I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm not a lawyer, so we'll get that out of the way. But the TIA, or Traffic Impact Analysis, as it's called, failed to meet the UDO requirements based on Swanspur's Traffic Engineer Memorandum. A developer's traffic engineer may offer an opinion, they don't like the Swanspur UDOs or consider it unfair, but that would be a personal opinion, not a technical. The UDO terms were developed with legal review and advisement from a traffic engineer, and I sent you a six-page letter about that earlier, so I think you have all the details. I cannot see a valid reason why a developer should be excused from a key TIA point. Otherwise, you may be shortchanging the town of Swanspur, perhaps hundreds of thousands of dollars, based on the example I gave you. Mind you, I'm not a traffic engineer, but the data's in there for you to look at. I don't know if that's meaningful for you, but it would be to me, I would think. To waive this term for a particular developer would be saying that you do not believe Swanspur should be invested in its traffic issues. I believe the town should. I promised myself to be brief. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Susan Gasperson? And name and address, please.
I'm Susan Gasperson. I live at 223 South Walnut Street here in Swanspur. Lived here for the better part of 25 years, and my husband and I have owned property and a business in Osceola County for over 50 years. So, longtime resident. I noticed when I came in and sat down, we all mostly know each other, one of the characteristics of a small town that we love. And I can't go over the numbers the way, and the statistics the way so many of you did so well, but I wanted to talk about one other thing, and that is our culture, the culture of our town. There are fewer and fewer towns in this country where we can still feel as one, and this is a unique place. The property values are through the roof, and that's why. And we all know that, and we don't want it to change. Walmart was fought hard against coming here, and we lost. And that is when the traffic changed in Swanspur. I was here before and after, and this is just another nail in the coffin, I'm afraid. I'm very sorry for the people. I understand they've already bought the property, I think. Very sad if this is denied for them, but this should have been considered ahead of time because this is a very unique town, and I don't see this as one project. I see this as the beginning of a change. And if you want to live in that kind of a city, there's Jacksonville, there's Morehead City, there's Raleigh, or maybe Sanford, but this is Swanspur. The people who live here want a quiet, peaceful life. I notice just since Walmart was built, for example, when I'm out in my yard, I hear sirens going off all day long. I never used to hear that before, and I don't want that to increase. So, Board members, you were elected by us to represent us. You are our voice. And those of you with Flybridge, I'm sorry, we don't want you here. And if I didn't want someone, if someone didn't want me to be somewhere, guess what? I wouldn't want to be there either. So please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Frank Caesarly, and name and address, and, yep, you got that one right there.
I've got three minutes. I'm Frank Caesarly.
You wasted 20. 20 seconds.
I've got all the time in the world. Frank Caesarly in Riverreach, my family lives there. I want to share with you that, number one, I agree with most of those folks who have already talked. They've done much better than I could, but I want to share with you that I am a Christian man. I believe in Jesus Christ, apple pie, and that governments exist to represent the people, just as the former speaker said. I think that we get frustrated sometimes with federal government. I would bet that almost everybody here would say, "Oh, the federal government, they're not helping me out, they're not taking care of me, they're not doing what they were elected to do," and so forth. I hope we don't have that same frustration with our local Board. So I think I've got more than 30 seconds left, Mr. Mayor, and I want some compensation.
Thank you for the conservation of time thing. Okay, so Jamie Patani, name and address, please. Yeah, it's permanently etched in my mind.
Yes, I'm Jamie Patani, and I live at 2102 Holly Hill Court, and I usually don't write anything down, but I've been adding notes as people are talking. There's a Table E1 site trip generation. A fully-built-out 300-apartment complex with roadfront businesses is expected to generate 8,618 total trips per day. We can't support that, and these are not my facts. These are the facts I got from y'all, from Flybridge. And I hate that you bought that property, and I'll bet you probably do now. The school board doesn't even know how many students are in our schools. We found that out at the last meeting. Call the schools, they have different numbers than what they have in Jacksonville, and as Flybridge, you cannot guarantee how many kids are going to move into those apartments, and those kids are going to go to our schools. There's no way to guarantee it. The infrastructure hasn't gotten any better. We still have an inadequate police department, excellent officers, just not enough. I hear sirens all night. We truck our poop to Lejeune, it goes to Lejeune who agrees to treat it, and that's only until they decide not to. Because, folks, Lejeune backs out sometimes. They moved all the retirees in, and then they threw them off the base when they needed the housing back. The electric grid's already warning us to use our appliances during off-seasons. The money generated by Flybridge will not cover the cost to its town and citizens. All the people that are here, and more, have told you that they do not want it. How in good conscience can you turn a deaf ear? If I wanted to live in Hampstead, I would move there. Do not turn Swanspur into Hampstead, and the apartments that are literally swallowing Hampstead. Have you been there? No one moves to Swanspur because of what we will be, but rather what we are now. Growth will happen in time. Responsible growth is fine. High density is not. Renters are not invested in our town. This is my home. I love it dearly. I could live anywhere in the world, but I choose to live in Swanspur, and everybody in this room does as well. Please vote no. You've got to listen to the people. Thank you. And you've got a hard job. Thank you very much for everything you do. I don't think I ever have told you thank you, but I have meant it every time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ashley Gardner, name and address, please.
Ashley Gardner, 101 Longwood Stella. Some here tonight, like myself, are not Swanspur residents. I've heard it said that our voices are not consistent with the taxpayers in this town. During the last LUP, the vast majority of survey participants were property owners in Swanspur Town Limits. They expressed that some of their most They expressed that some of their most significant concerns were about traffic and controlling growth. Only about 10% supported the idea of multi-story apartment development at all. Worth knowing that multiple other projects will be competing with the Flybridge owners for their attention. The station at Northview, a 400-unit complex in Sanford, and with partners Local 70 and Smithfield, a 75-acre mixed-use housing development, and Reeves Farm in Pittsboro, a 488-acre mixed-use commercial and residential development, all of which list Flybridge members on their public LLC filings for the entities that own these properties. I understand that Flybridge now recognizes that they were the owners of the Pittsboro project we talked about last time. As far as Mendley at Northwood, I have bad news. They did build it, they do manage it, but unless all of the property records are wrong, they don't own it. They are not listed as the registered managers, or managing members, or members, or anywhere on the LLC information that the property says owns that.
Okay.
Understood. I'm sorry I didn't bring those documents tonight. I didn't think we'd be talking about Mendley. Anyway, Flybridge has the potential to be the largest project in our history. It will make whoever owns it the single largest stakeholder in our town. I'm apprehensive of the way that I have seen Flybridge present some of their information, so the idea of Swansboro entrusting them with such uniquely enormous stake in our future gives me pause. We cannot fear growth and opportunity, but we cannot allow it to cloud our judgment either. Flybridge discusses the tax revenue, but $230,000 is a rounding error in any one of their projects, and if they sell as soon as they lease it up, they won't even have to pay that full amount. They talk about preservation. The best way to preserve this land is to leave it designated RA. As the Land Use Plan clearly states, and I'm quoting, "Farms are not just neighborhoods waiting to develop." I said once before that a request for change puts the onus on those seeking it to provide the benefits for the community as a whole, and I do not believe that threshold has been met.
You've got 30.
Between UDO violations, the lack of transparency, strains on our current infrastructure, and the lack of support from the planning board or the community, I see no compelling reason to approve the amendment to the LUP or rezoning. I implore the board to vote no tonight. Thank you.
And you'll get a chance for rebuttal at the end, so thank you for holding your ground. That's the process. That's the process. Okay, Jody Sarathin. Hope I got your last name right. Okay.
Jody Sarathin, 110 West Bay Road. Thank you for hearing from us, we really do appreciate it. Okay, I just wanted to touch base on a few things that were mentioned a few meetings ago that we couldn't respond back to. So, we, I heard us being called a few names. Us, the people here, not the board was being called names. I heard words like entitled and closed-minded. If the person who made these statements was listening, they would have heard several of us that spoke state that we did not live here our entire lives, that we only lived here anywhere between 1 to 15 years. The few that did mention that they lived here their entire lives, they certainly were not acting entitled, and they don't feel that they're entitled. Instead, they feel concerned and saddened, that's all. They have every right to, because this undoubtedly will be bad for our community. I've seen it, I've witnessed it in a couple of other towns. That's why we moved here. Sorry. Okay, so, the community, the development that you're talking about, I heard Flybridge just mention that we're going to have commercial buildings here. Well, commercial buildings don't bring multiple, multiple people. Flybridge is going to bring multiple, multiple people here and multiple cars. And the people who do come to our town may not pay taxes, but they do contribute to our stores and our economy, and that's good. And knowing that there are already developers in the nearby towns, and admitting that this will increase traffic, why would we ever want to add to this? This just makes no sense at all. So one of the Flybridge speakers who said that there were people here from other towns other than Swansboro and Hubert a few meetings ago, we say good, we welcome them, because this will affect them as well. Cedar Point, Emerald Isle, Stella, all the way down to Morehead City, these towns will be affected. And as far as the comment basically trying to shame us is that we don't, we're bad because we don't want to accept people here? It's not that we don't want people here, and it's not a shame on us for not wanting this. We might as well take the word friendly out of the friendly city by the sea, which would be extremely sad to me, only if this goes through, because overcrowding, longer waits in tables at restaurants, longer lines grocery stores, and yes, traffic unfortunately leads to frustration, which leads to unfriendliness. And this is a fact, unfortunately, it's a fact. Just look at larger cities and overcrowded towns.
That's your three minutes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll do a few more, and then we'll go take another break here shortly. Ann Schuler, and if you'll state your name and address.
I'm short. I'm Ann Schuler, and I live at 140 Front Street, in the house in which I grew up and that my grandfather built, and I speak to wonderful visitors every day. Some come down the street at 8:00 and 10:00 at the time, and they are always excited, and they always make good comments and ask questions. And I want to thank each of you, board and mayor, for what you do and your service to the town. Swansboro has grown on its own by leaps and bounds in my lifetime in every direction. As a young girl, we would go by boat, which was the only way there to Emerald Isle, to have a picnic, docking at the Coast Guard Station, which was the only structure there. The beach was so big, and I enjoyed rolling down the sand dunes. Yes, things have grown and changed. Here in Swansboro, we've allowed much of our history and character to be taken away, and we mustn't let that continue. In the movie A Few Good Men, two young servicemen are waiting and are given punishment for their part in a tragic death of a fellow serviceman. One says, "Why? We followed orders. We didn't do anything wrong." The other young man says, "Yes, we did. We were supposed to stand up for someone who couldn't stand up for himself." Well, in this case, I'm standing up for this unique, amazingly beautiful and fragile village that I love, I hope we all love. Swansboro is different and special, just like people, and it can't take the influx of mass. Our water, everything, will be affected, and quality of life is more valuable than money. Someone said, "Our freedom to make choices makes us responsible for those choices." Thank you.
Thank you.
Lee Schuler, 140 Front Street. My father's 1980 commentary responded to a proposed acquisition of private properties for paving portions of Swansboro's waterfront for parking, threatening demolitions. My 94-year-old great aunt's letter to the editor encouraged preservation of Swansboro's former elementary school building, a product of a citizen-led effort for repurposing as Onslow County's History Museum, but it succumbed to demolition to make way for condominiums. The former Terry Moore Hotel and its large magnolia tree were demolished to make way for parking. First Citizens Bank and the former post office replaced five historic structures, including the handsome Pittman and Gibson houses and their large magnolia and pecan trees. Also in the past, a developer expressed interest in building condominiums in Swansboro's waterfront, and another expressed interest in developing one of our islands. In more recent years, there was a passionate but failed opposition to Walmart, and in the past, we've heard about construction runoff into a creek and illegal drainage of wetlands. When I was growing up, there were no traffic lights in Swansboro, and only two-chain commercial businesses, as I recall. Today, passing through Swansboro daily are nearly seven vehicles per resident or 20 vehicles per household. Last year, the police department responded to five traffic accidents per week and issued six traffic citations per day. Swansboro has been changed by its rapid growth, threatening to move us away from who we are. As one past visitor warned, "You will lose your uniqueness and quaintness." Another Swansboro could lose its character. Another, there's a sense of history, nostalgia, and pride, you can't put a price tag on that. And another Swansboro is safe for kids. It's also been noted that existing road widening and traffic light needs are not currently planned, nor has school overcrowding been eased. Two members of the 13-member steering committee reminded us that the 2019 Land Use Plan incorporated input from a cross-section of Swansboro's residents, businesses, and organizations via open-house forums, stakeholder meetings, in-person interviews, and an online survey of children were supervised, so families could participate. Are we willing to ignore citizens' time investment and set a precedent for future boards to amend land use plans in accordance with interpretations of the citizens' wishes, rather than to initiate a new plan or update that incorporates citizen participation? Additionally, Swansboro's 21st-century population growth rate has been nine times greater than the nation's, including two decades of annual growth, tripling our population, and we're now seeking to boost that growth further. And if we're seeking to ignore the citizens' guided land use plan, and existing infrastructure and school capacity improvements have not yet been realized, and if our commercial development has been occurring in a manner that even 15 years ago, a new resident wished we could clean up businesses on Highway 24, make them more appealing as visitors enter town, is this managed growth. According to some projections, North Carolina will pass four large states during the next two decades to become the nation's fifth-most populous state, and our coastal population of people. The challenge for Swansboro is not growth stimulation, but rather management of the flood of growth and development continues to flow our way. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll do one more. Do you want to take a break after that, guys? Anyone? Or you, boy? Whatever, everybody wants. Keep going? Okay, all right, I'm good. Oh, come on. All right, Robert Gasperson, name and address, please.
Robert Gasperson, Jr., 223 South Walnut Street. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Earlier, when the representatives of Flybridge were making their petition for this project, they were making a lot of comments about benefits for this project, and the one I heard the most, probably about a dozen times I counted, and was pretty much almost the only benefit that was mentioned, was tax money, as if dollar signs are the main stipulation of what generates happiness and well-being for residents of this town. I've lived here for 20 years, better part of my childhood growing up, and my young adult life, and I never thought I would see today where this large multinational residential, multifamily residential complex is being discussed. It's a life sub which this town has never seen before. They made an observation of commercial land surrounding this project site as justification for this project, and the commercial land that they were referring to consisted of a car dealership and a boat jangles, and it doesn't really call to mind a sprawling commercial opportunistic landscape, to me, because that's not what Swansboro is. It is not a grand, commercial, corporate hellscape, at least it's not right now. And that is what gives this town its charm, and makes it so beautiful and so beloved by all who live here and all who visit here. Because it is not Greensboro, it is not Raleigh, and it's not even Jacksonville or Morehead. And that is exactly why people who live and/or work here come out of those cities and out of their way to come to this town that has not been gutted and fleshed out and erased of its character and history to become another clone of these same places. And has personality that is unique and vastly different from those sprawling commercial opportunities. And when they say "commercial opportunities," what I see a lot of coming up on West Corbett Avenue lately is a lot of corporations and not small, family-owned businesses. It's becoming a lot more like all these other places that I've mentioned before. And as far as the economy that was mentioned, how we have this need for the workforce, I'm at a loss, because I simply do not see it, where this little town can accommodate hundreds of people and new potential workers. There's not an industry plant here, there's not a very large
30 seconds.
corporation that will employ hundreds of people. And the primary investment that they're talking about, which is kind of an elephant in the room, is the hundreds of thousands of dollars in rent that will go from the people who live there to a corporation that is far away from here and will not be recycled back into our economy, but will go elsewhere. And so, I ask Commissioners to vote no and to not change the landscape of this town to match the rest of civilization we see around us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, I'm Tim Peters, 210 Vigilance, Swansboro. You know, history, if it doesn't repeat itself, it certainly rhymes. Bringing back memories of the Walmart incident, just everything sounds the same. DOT, it's going to be fine. No, it wasn't. The watershed, it's going to be fine. No, it wasn't. Sound, the light pollution, none of it, garbage, every bit of it. Engineers lied to us, planners lied to us, developers lied to us. But we lost. We lost, because we weren't hurt already. It's like, okay, you can't do anything about the car accident, but you're going to have it, and then, you know, but you'll be okay. About 20 years ago, I decided to live here, and I've lived in some of the most beautiful places in the world. I was born and raised in Alaska, joined the Navy, traveled the world, wanted to live here with these people, want to die here. My kids went to the school, graduated, now I have grandkids going to these schools. We want to live here. This is my family, this is not just citizens. I love each and every, these are my aunts, my uncles, dads, moms, these are my people. This is my home. And you can use your college stuff, your agenda 31. Oh, you have a shortage of rental. We are not a warehouse. Don't tell us we have a shortage of, oh, we have to have rental space here. Not here. There's Hubert. Have you driven down Queens Creek Road and seen all the apartment complexes they're building there? We have, we have rental. They're coming, and they're coming to our schools, and they're going to flood our roads, and we have no infrastructure for it, because we're told, "Oh, it's been addressed." Has it? No. You tell us you're going to build us a new school, you tell us you're going to fix the road, you tell us you're going to put bike trails, you tell us you're going to do sidewalks, you tell us you're going to give us all this infrastructure for our home, and then you're, what? We're going to dump this transient barracks compound on you? No. No, thank you. You're going to pull $7 million a year out of our community and give us a measly $200,000? No, thank you. I love you guys. I love the Commissioners.
30 seconds.
I love what you do, but you're supposed to, we're the generals, and you guys are the soldiers. We say, "We don't want this." We don't want, keep saying it. Now we're pissed, because somebody represents Sanford more than they do Swansboro. It's strange. Don't write me a letter, tell me, don't write a letter to all of us and tell us how wonderful Sanford is. This is not Sanford. It's completely different.
30 minutes, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Todd Garner, name and address, please.
Carter, 304 Limbaugh Lane, and I have my own timer, so I don't need an interruption. That's okay. I've been told that Swansboro relies too much on just one industry, and we need to diversify that industry being tourism, as if this industry of tourism is a car factory or something that could just shut down and leave us in the wind here. And I don't think it's a fair comparison. I do think diversification of our industries is fine, but I don't feel like we should be adding industries that are in conflict- adding industries that are in conflict with our tourism. And think about how our tourism interplays with all the other industries in town and how it adds to the other industries in our town. I think it's fair to say that high-density rental units are not compatible and not complementary to our tourism industry here. I think that it's important to understand, and I don't like to pull this card, but I am an aquatic biologist, no matter how good your plan is for treating water, no matter how big your retention pond is, no matter how good your plan is for pulling off sewage, every single person and pet and washer and car and toilet added to a community increases the organic nitrogen and phosphorus that makes its way through our soil and into our waterways, one way or another, whether it's down by Lejeune or whether it's right here, right? This proposed community backs up to a wetlands that drains directly into Queens Creek. Queens Creek already has a shellfish closure extending well downstream of the Queens Creek Bridge, all right? I guarantee with a thousand more people in that very highly concentrated spot, we're gonna see that closure extend further down, all the way down to the intercoastal. I guarantee it. I'd like to also mention that in the last couple of meetings, I heard some fearmongering about hog farms. I talked to my uncle, who had a hog farm for many years outside of Jacksonville, although he owns agricultural land in Swansboro, and I asked him, why don't you have a hog farm here? He said, well, first of all, it doesn't make any sense to have a hog farm here. Second of all,
Thirty second.
people should know that there's been a moratorium on new hog farms in North Carolina for years. I guarantee every single person that stood here last time and tried to fearmonger us with hog farms knew that. Or maybe they didn't know that much about how land is used in our state. So whether they didn't know or they were lying, I really don't know which is worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so let's go ahead and take a ten-minute break, please. Nah, well, you know, it's good, we're gonna take a ten-minute break. We'll come back at 8:15. Okay. Let me do something.
There's ten more. Ten more to go. Number four to go.
Glad you can.
There's always, we're like twins.
Hey, Laurie.
We could honestly just do it back there. I'm calling you. Where do you wanna go?
Yeah.
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 Okay, folks, it's quarter after, so it's about time to proceed again. Hey. Yeah.
I know.
Yeah, sure. You want to get them in? Okay.
Your neck.
All right.
Okay, so we're going to wait a couple more minutes. Chief's going to see if there's a couple more people that want to come inside from outside. Okay, we're good. All right, so we're going to go ahead and resume. So Vicki Brown, name and address, and if you feel like your topic's been covered and you don't want to speak, that's perfectly fine, but if you definitely have the opportunity to speak if you're signed up. It's been covered. All right, well, that was a perfect timing. David Epperson. And your name and address, please.
My name is David Epperson, 246 Channel Marker Loop, Swansboro. I was going to originally be up here and speak from a builder's perspective on multifamily homes, but then I realized that the builders are from Sanford, and I spent my entire military career from newbie to retirement at Fort Bragg. I saw firsthand what happened when multifamily homes come into an area where Rayford and Hope Mills used to be outlying communities are now pretty much in Fayetteville. Everything, when you build one multifamily home, another one comes in, and then another, and then another. Then you need another gas station, then another McDonald's, another Waffle House. I didn't retire and move back here because I wanted to be in Swansville. I wanted to be in Swansboro. Swansboro is not a multifamily home. It's not of Walmart, or Food Lion, or the Pig Wigley. This is Swansboro. It's where, when I go to the store, I see Lauren, or I see Marilyn Boys, or Miss Oofy. It's not a multifamily home. It's not a place where you come for a couple of years and leave. It's a place where you make roots, you start a family, and you live here in small town in the USA. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for keeping it brief. Okay, Clayton New.
Clayton New, Levin Creekside Woods Court, Swansboro. I've got lots of random blurbs here. I worked in federal construction for Navy, and I would treat our land use plan as a contract. This is your taxpaying base, you know, providing that funding and all that, so we've got a contract here with the land use plan. And now we have Flybridge, which is a submittal, but this submittal's been submitted as a variation. And when you actually evaluate a variation with the government, you have to evaluate and say, huh, engineer of record, that's helping me, and then there's the government. And we evaluate if this is positive, if accepting this variation is actually a benefit to the government. Well, you've got the planning board, and you've got the citizens, so two-thirds of that group entitled to that variation have said no. So in my world of government contracting, this would be an automatic denial of this variation. You know, I've heard about generational locals, and, you know, I've been here my whole life, and when you actually start talking to some of the elderly around here, it's not a generational local entitlement, it's just their baseline is down here. It's people that grew up without shoes except on Sunday, or a new pair of shoes that went to school. My mom had a boat at Ward Shore when she said it was clear water. Now my Facebook feed says you can't swim in places. So I think we've got a people problem on the coastal area. We have not heard anything on how they're going to control the commercial out parcels. I know that I believe in capitalism, but looks like a car lot, brakes, car parts, vape shop, you know, nail salon, nothing against some of the other nail salons, but it's not kind of the business we need. But they haven't told us anything about those parcels. Also, there's going to be a gas station. How many gas stations are we going to put on the right side of the road going through Swansboro? We already have a left-turn problem, so we're going to put something else on the right. You know, they've also titled this as a future land use plan. Okay, well, then, that's the zoning we want for the future. And you can take all these people in this room, and these are now your stakeholders, for your future land use plan update. This has generated a lot of volunteers, and a lot of stakeholders, and a lot of steering committee people take this as an opportunity. But right now, let's say no, and we'll do the work and change the plan, and we'll have all these people involved. I heard 11.6 inches in 24 hours. I think Florence exceeded that, right? Let's find Ashley Gardner a house in Swansboro also. You know, they talked about that this plan would also offer balanced growth, but I haven't heard anything with any utilities, any county school board. I've heard nobody that said they don't have capacity. But then when you start realizing that all these people on the boards are, this guy's in the county. I'm over. All right.
Sorry. Thanks for your understanding, though. Now, that's a good man right there. I'm going to tell you that. And thank you for your understanding, Clayton. Francis Colbert, I think it is? Corbett? I couldn't read it, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, I know you. Yep, okay, yep.
Hi, I'm Francis Corbett. I've probably taught a lot of you. I've paddled some of you. I've had some of you in the middle school where I used to be principal. I live here. I don't plan to move. I plan to die here. My family moved here in 1930s, almost 95 years ago. Some of you, Dr. Corbett Boer, some of you are named after him. You are not, but you need to get to know your history, because some of you do not know your history. You need to join the Swansboro Historical Society, become part of a member, learn about the history of this town. This town is not about undue growth. It is not about yelling at us when we come up here and telling us that we're not allowing, you're not allowing us to talk and speak out of our hearts while these developers, and my father was a developer, but he didn't ever proposed anything like this. Developers should not get more time than the public, and I think a lot of people here agree with that. I've learned a lot from coming to these meetings. If it's approved, this is going to be the largest population increase in the history of this town. That is unacceptable. Needs to stop. The traffic is out of control. We had to come over here on Mount Pleasant, Main Street Extension, and I think they've already increased the time limit you have to wait there at that light. We couldn't even get out. The construction practices of this company, you really need to look into, because I read an article in the Tide Land News, and I encourage you, don't subscribe, to subscribe, that I think it's called the landings, that this company built the landings. They had to move half the population of them out because of construction problems. You've got a big construction problem going on over here on this thing they're trying to build. It's too many houses. It's too many, it shouldn't be houses. It shouldn't be apartments. We don't need any more apartments. We don't need any apartments in this town. This is a small town. It is not a conglomerate. We need to keep it small so that the number of children going into these schools is not go up. Have I got 30 seconds? I've got a lot more to say, but I want to say I've never heard so many ugly things come against the public that has come through these meetings that I have been to and witnessed. Something is wrong, and I urge the citizens of this town to make some different decisions in the next election, and I think you're going to see some major changes.
Okay, Michelle Chase.
Hi, Michelle Chase, 303 Battery Park Lane, Swansboro. I had the opportunity to go door-to-door in my community, in my development, Charleston Park, to get petitions signed. I got 55 signatures, hard copy. Then there were 40 additional signatures. Nobody wants this. Those people aren't here, but their names are on the papers. I want to share some things with you that my neighbors had to say. First of all, there was one couple that lived near the Hampstead area. They moved here because of congestion, and now that's what they're worried about with this. Everybody was eager to sign this petition. People dropped what they were doing on a Sunday afternoon. People were out on the porches, talking to me, signing the petition. It was football. They didn't care. There was one young man that came out. He signed the petition. I had asked, is there anyone else in the house that can sign? Yeah, my mother, she's cooking dinner. I said, that's fine. He went in the house. I left. She came over running out just to sign the petition. Nobody wants this. You have to pay attention to that. The biggest concerns, traffic. If this goes through, well, you may as well put a stoplight at every intersection, because we will never get out of Charleston Place, ever. We can't get out of it now and turn left. One thing I did hear, why even sign it? They sign, but nobody's going to pay attention to it. They don't care what we think. No, that's terrible. Several neighbors expressed a concern over possible conflict of interest of a voting commissioner that may perhaps have a future financial gain.
Okay, so let's don't go down personal attacks, okay?
That's what they said. Okay, so three things I got out of this. As I said, the traffic. Put stoplights all over the place. There you go. Let's increase that congestion. Maybe recusal of a vote. Also, if you can't vote, no. Then could somebody please put a motion to put it on the ballot next year? We're not in any big hurry for this. Let the people actually speak. Let the voters have a voice. This is too big of a substantial, community-impacting project to just leave up to the committee.
You've got 30 seconds.
I've got.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, and thank you for your understanding, and we got your point. Okay, Costas Crocker.
Good evening.
And name and address.
111 Jones Road, Swansboro, North Carolina. Back up here again, but I'm trying to look at things slightly different. I do appreciate the work that the Flybridge team has done. I think they have spent many, many hours trying to adjust probably a plan they've used somewhere else that would maybe better suit Swansboro. But I also appreciate all the work that Common Sense has done, and individuals, and also the commissioners in trying to get this pulled together and to make a decision. The one thing I was thinking about is how statistics can be manipulated. You can pretty much make statistics say whatever you want them to say. And in looking at the land use plan, I see some of that happening, too. I see points pulled out by the Flybridge team. I also see other points pulled out by the community. The thing is, is we have to look at it in terms of what is best for Swansboro. We can't always just base it, oh, yeah, it meets this land use plan in this aspect, or it doesn't. One question I did hear that Flybridge said today that I thought was opposed to what was presented last time, two weeks ago, was about the schools. I thought we heard last time that there was no plans for schools in this area, and I thought I heard Flybridge say, yes, there is. Need an answer to that question. One other, I've harped on transportation and roads and accidents before. I did have, in a matter of two days, I had two accidents adjoining my property. That's way too many, and one of them was a head-on. So we still need to work on that. The property that's in question, and this is what I didn't get to say the last time, I think there's some other uses that that property could be used for that would benefit our community more. One, somebody mentioned the parking here at City Hall. We could use a bigger area for either City Hall, we're talking about a new emergency management center. It may be more accessible. Again, it would take changes. You'd still have to go back and make probably zoning changes and some other things. A community garden, the swimming pool, all kinds of things.
30 seconds.
Boy, I'm there already, huh? Well, that boils down to making the decision, and I just would ask you to make the decision according to what the people want. And the people have spoken against Flybridge almost unanimously, so please consider that.
Thank you. Doug Rogers.
My name's Doug Rogers. I'm at 406 Salem Street. My point is, what's the hurry? Why are we in such a rush to approve such a consequential development? No does not mean never. You guys are being asked, and you're in a very difficult position. The Flybridge people, I'm sure they're good folks, but they made a purchase knowing that this land was not zoned for what they want to do. We've got a land use plan that's, I think, is a good document. Sure, it could be tweaked. Everybody has an opinion whether this part's good, this part's bad. But the bottom line is, we don't need to be put in a position of having to make a hasty decision on this development tonight, because they made what some may say is a questionable business decision. Don't know. But what I do know is that if you guys were to say no, that's not never. And what I do know is that if you say no, that that property's still going to be there. Flybridge folks are still going to be in business. But give us the time as a community to make decisions as to what we want this town to look like in the future. The current land use plan, I think, was originally written in 2009 and was updated in 2019. It's due. It's due to be either rewritten or revised. We don't need to be put in a position where we have to make a hasty decision because of somebody else's. Are you there? Okay. We don't need to be put in a position where we have to make a quick decision tonight, because they made an investment. That's on them. We have to look at what's in the best interest of Swansboro, and we don't need to be made quickly. We need to take our time, go through, look at the land use plan, decide whether we want to rewrite it or amend it. And after we've done that, then we may welcome the Flybridge people in here with open arms, if that's what the community wants. But my point is, please, let's not make a hasty decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Stevenson Gibbs.
Hi, good evening, and thank you, everybody, for showing up. Thank you, guys, for what you do as well. Military wife, been here on and off since 2000. In 2019, we decided we wanted a retirement home. Swansboro was number one on our list, and it was because of the community. It was because of the people in the community. I've taught at Coastal Carolina Community College. I've taught at East Carolina University. I've taught at Cape Carter Rec. I drove from Jacksonville or Swansboro to each one of those places. My husband, upon retirement, taught at Hadlock High School and drove every day back and forth. Why? Because of this community. So please, take into account all of the amazing factual data that's been presented to you. Look at the people in this room, because you're going to have to look at them tomorrow, and the next day, and next year. This is our home. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, John Hunnings.
John Hunnings, live at 81 Picket Way. Hey, my wife's stuck outside. There's capacity in here. Can we let her back in? Saying that she can't leave, she can't come in? That's the Hunnings?
All right, then, do you want to wait for her to come in?
No, no, I just don't want her sitting outside.
Okay, let's go ahead and start. Yeah.
Not very gentleman.
All right, go ahead.
All right. Hey, good evening. I'd like to revisit several key points raised during the February 7th Special Commissioners Meeting with Representative Wyatt Gable. The meeting was convened to highlight the town's most pressing concerns, and I believe it's important to ensure those issues remain front and center here tonight. At that meeting, Commissioner Eckendorf made a clear and unequivocal statement. The residents of Swansboro do not want high-density housing. They want a quarter to half acre of land with a house and a picket fence. Every commissioner present at that meeting agreed with that sentiment. These were not my words. They were the words of the elected officials who represent us, and they reflect what I see and hear every day in our community. Mayor Protemp at the time Justice, now Mayor Justice, also voiced concerns about our infrastructure. He specifically highlighted the dangers at the intersection of Queens Creek and Highway 24, where three schools already contribute to frequent accidents. He noted that Queens Creek Bridge, the repair originally scheduled for 2025, has now been delayed to 2030, and stressed the urgency of prioritizing that project for public safety. Mayor Justice also referenced the Main Street Extension paving timeline and the future light industrial area, acknowledging that while those projects may not pose immediate traffic or drainage issues, roadwork must be completed before any significant growth can be responsibly supported. In addition, Mayor Justice and other board members expressed frustration that Swansboro continues to be passed over for school funding while other towns in the county receive new facilities. As Commissioner Brown informed Representative Gable, the middle school has remained unchanged since Mayor Justice himself attended this school many decades ago, and I'll leave out how many decades, he said. Our middle school is aged and in need of replacement. While we may not meet the technical definition of overcrowding in our schools, we are undeniably unsupported. These are not just logistical concerns. They are matters of safety, sustainability, respect for the character of the town. I respectfully urge this board to honor the commitments and concerns voiced in February by Mayor Justice, Commissioner Eckendorf, and Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, 30 seconds.
Stand with the residents you represent. Reject the Flybridge proposal until our infrastructure is ready, our schools are supported, and our town's character is protected. Swansboro has been consistently overlooked while other jurisdictions receive new schools and infrastructure investment. Mayor Justice and other board members acknowledge this imbalance and call for stronger communication with the county and state to secure support we deserve. That commitment must now be translated into action. I urge the board not only to reject the Flybridge proposal until our infrastructure and schools are ready.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have Keith Walsh.
Keith Walsh. I don't live in the town of Swansboro. I just pay taxes here. For the last 30 years, when I've worked, I've worked as a real estate developer. A lot of that time in and around Swansboro, I've been, being here tonight reminds me of several times I have been to town rezoning hearings on the other side of the coin, begging the commissioners permission to pursue my personal dreams and develop the town the way I see fit. I don't think I've ever quite seen anything like tonight. I think if I had ever been looking to rezone a piece of property in the town where I had such opposition as I've seen tonight, I would, I don't quite have the guts these folks from Flybridge have. I would have had to have withdrawn my proposal. I have to disagree with some folks that have said you have a difficult decision. If the crowd was split, that would be a difficult position to be in. But all these folks here, this is the town of Swansboro. You guys could be gone in two months or two years. These people voted to put you where you are, and they ask you to conduct the business of the town, not to pursue your personal passions. And if that's what you wanted to do, you should have stayed off the board and been just like me, and been over there at the other speaker, begging the commissioners to do what what you wanted to do. Uh, you have a, you have a easy, easy vote tonight. Nobody in this town
32nd.
Wants this project. Raise your hand in here if you want this project. I don't even think you can get the commissioners, the, uh, developers to have, have the balls to raise their hand and say they want the project. Thank you, I'm good.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that colorful rendition. Uh, okay, Joyce Johnson is next, and that's our last one.
Okay, buddy, you're a hard act to follow. Um, my name is Joyce Johnson. I do not live in the town of Swansboro.
Name and address, please.
I live at, my name is Joyce Johnson. I live at 195 Peninsula Manor Road in Hubert. I am part of your community. I contribute taxes here. The county contributes. The taxes I pay to the county contributes to Swansboro. And, and I have been told that because I don't live here, maybe I shouldn't be here. But that's not the case. Because I don't live in the Swansboro or in the ETJ does not mean that my life is not affected by this development. Hubert is growing by leaps and bounds. I have to go down Queens Creek Road. It's a death trap. You know it is. Everybody in here has talked about it. I don't want a four-lane, superhighway like, like they're trying to make Piney Green into. Just slow the roll a little bit. I beg you to preserve our unique little town. My family's business needs this unique little town. I am not just Joe Schmo person. I have a business here. My family has a business here, and it depends on the tourism industry that this town has grown on. It's fine that you think that we need housing. Nobody could afford your housing anyway, no offense. We can't. I was a teacher. If I could afford your housing, I would probably still be a teacher. I'm dead serious. We need to slow the roll. We need you to look at this and work with our county commissioners, not just Onslow County, but Cedar Point, too. Work together. There, there is a way to do that. Don't shake your head like you didn't have to listen to me. This is our town. We are a community. Hubert and Swansboro have always worked together, always. That's why our children go to Swansboro High School and to Queens Creek and Swansboro Elementary School when their momma's working downtown Swansboro. We need you to say no to this and work together. I'm not stopping here. We're going to end up having to go to the county commissioners, because Flybridge already told us, we'll just go down the road to the county. That's what they already told us. They threatened, you don't let us do this, we're going to go down the road to the county. Well, my question is, if you are the county commissioners of the Swansboro people, are you going to help us fight at the county? Vote no and help us fight at the county. We're not ready. Our infrastructure is not ready.
All right, thank you. Okay, we had one other Randy Swanson, but I think Randy had to leave. So, um, we'll, at this time, give you guys a chance, if you'd like to bring up anything or rebut anything, uh, from the developers. Well, well, let's clarify that a little bit. There's a lot more of you than there are of them, so keep it brief as you can, but, you know. Okay, all right, folks, come on.
Actually, I was just going to say that we do have some responses. We'll be glad to answer any questions from the board, but in the interest of time, though, we would not like to make a rebuttal at this time, but we will, are able to answer questions.
Anybody have a question? Okay, before we close the public hearing, I just want to make a quick comment. You know, I was deciding vote the last time. Nothing against Flybridge at all and the developers. I think you guys are fine people. I took a little heat from some people for it, but that's fine. I'm a big, big boy, I can take it. I, I don't see anything that's changed my opinion tonight. I'll be honest with you. I'll sincerely tell you, I don't see anything that's changed my opinion. I would still vote against it. I'm still not for the development, um, for a number of reasons. I got a call from Raleigh today, somebody in Raleigh, that's got bombarded by calls, negative calls, about the project coming here. Yeah, people from this town and well-known people from this town calling to Raleigh and, um, not wanting the, wanting the project. And again, it's nothing against you guys. I'm sure you guys are, do fine stuff. You know, I'm on a couple of development committees. I'm on the Jacksonville Onslow Economic Development Committee. Uh, I'm on a Jomfo Committee, which deals with roads and, and stuff. And there's nothing in the roads for 10 years. So when would the project be done? You know, would it be done in three years? But then we've got seven more years to go. So I'm kind of rambling, saying it's been a long meeting, but, uh, I don't see anything that would change my mind tonight. I was elected to represent the citizens, and that's what I feel like my responsibility is to do. That simple. There's nothing against the developers, um, but that's just my opinion. So with that being said, we're going to close the public hearing. Okay?
If I may bear
Yeah. Oh, yeah, thank you very much.
Seem to, um, cover both issues, but I think it would be smart just to keep this process legally defensible if you ask if anyone else who might want to have something to say that they, that has not been touched on, uh, if they would like to speak and give them that opportunity, I would recommend.
Does anybody here, our attorney, uh, if anybody, we're, we're kind of taking this, it was a broad range of discussion, so we're, the two are combined at the beginning of the meeting, on the two motions. Uh, does anybody have anything else that they didn't see addressed that they would like to address at this time? Okay, Jeff, okay, we got a couple. Thomas, after her, if you'll let her go first and then, yep. All right, uh, name and address, please, ma'am. No, ma'am.
I'm Jennifer Kettner, um, 114 South Water Street. We keep talking about the tax money that's going to come in annually from this project. Do we know how many, um, police officers or EMS personnel that we need to hire? What we would need, what the cost would be to build a new school? Any of the infrastructure that we would have to spend money on to accommodate these people? I mean, is $200,000 annually even going to be a drop in the hat? I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And you got her name and address, Alisa? Uh, okay, name and address, please.
Tom Farady, 708 Meeting Clark Lane, uh, Swansboro. So as, as we sit here and we do all this stuff, and for those of y'all that know, like, I'm on the planning board, right? So I voted the way that I voted for a number of reasons. The big thing that I wanted to stand up and just say to all of y'all, uh, as you sit here, there's a lot of fear mongering that goes on. I hear numbers that get thrown out. There's a lot of numbers that come up. Infrastructure can't do this, infrastructure can't do that. And the reality is that the infrastructure can support, right? The roads, things will get fixed as they, as things get built around here. I'm not saying that I'm for this. Where I'm going with all this stuff and what we need to sit down and truly think about, um, is not throw out some non-factual numbers, not sit down and talk about that. But the question I've got is, as you look at this building, you look at what everything looks like coming down the road if this three-story monstrosity goes in, right? My question for everybody here is, at what point in time did Flybridge sit down and go, what is Swansboro? Who is Swansboro? What buildings are currently in Swansboro? Right? And I'm going to tell you, we don't have any of those. You go down to Hampton, Hampstead, or, yeah, Hampstead, you go down to Wilmington, you look at some of that stuff. It's not what I want to come home to every day. And all I'll tell you is, you sit down, and this vote here is not about what they have going on. It's about whether or not this fits in the land use plan. You can read the land use plan all you want, right? Half of it says, yes, it's all good, the other half doesn't, because in my opinion, nothing against you, Doug, it's poorly written. It needs to sit down and say things, because it will tell you in there that high-density housing brings more taxes. It brings more money. It's what Swansboro is supposed to have. It says it in there, and it's poorly written. We need to address that. What we need to truly think about, and what you guys need to think about, does it fit the character of Swansboro with how it's going to be built? If you go through and you change the land use plan right now and say it's going to be a suburban downtown, fine. You change that to be one conditional, what you saw is what you are getting. Do you want to see that every day that you come home? It's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Thomas. Okay, um, so, that being said, uh, do I have a motion on any action on the Cama Future Land Use Map Amendment and for the zoning map amendment?
Yeah, make a motion to deny.
Jeff, you made a motion to deny?
Yes.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, uh, there's a second. Uh, just, let's do a show of hands, so it's easy. Well, no, we can just say aye. Yep. Oh, that's right, I always wanted to forget discussion. Okay, any discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
You know, for, one of the things I, that I never liked about our form of government, for how we're elected, is I don't get to see who voted for me. So I don't, I don't know who I'm representing. But I think today, I found out. And how I found out was I looked at the petition, and I looked at the people that voted during my election in '21, and I did a little cross-referencing, and boy, it came close to the number. Taking out the obvious ones, friends of mine, you know, family, take those numbers out, because, well, I hope my family voted for me. But with that said, obviously, for me, this was a very easy vote, as Mr. Walsh had stated, because you elected me to represent you, to be your voice. Well, back in February, I heard you. I might be a little deaf, but I heard you again. So that's, that was my reasoning for a motion to deny. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Pat, any discussion you'd like?
Yeah, I do want to say, Flybridge, I think you have a beautiful piece of property, and I think that your presentation is great, but my vote is going for what the citizens of Swansboro want and need, and at this time, it's, it's not Flybridge.
Doug?
This is probably the, the challenge of, we're a crossroads here, I guess, and everyone's anticipating what our decision's going to be. And I, believe me, this is not an easy decision to make. At the same time, I think about what the town could be even after my tenure. And considerations, but I'm also very, very conflicted, after this meeting tonight especially, is that, you know I'm a contextualist and did read the North Carolina U.S. Constitution on this. One of the things it mentions in Section 8, Article 1, is you got to have the consent of the governed. Without the consent of the governed, the board really has no power whatsoever. Okay? And, yes, tonight has been an impact. I'm not capitulating at all on that, but I am listening to the rational reasoning that, yes, you, the citizens, you did represent us to represent you, or you did elect us to represent you. And, yes, unanimously, the ones that showed up here tonight are the ones that their voices carry. Now, at the same time, I also feel conflicted, because I also ran on the policy that you all supported as well, to make a path to the next generation. I think we have an obligation to them. I think tonight's a setback to that. Keith calls it an agenda, I call it a vision. But I think both can survive. We have to find a way to come together to make that happen. Because in this room, if I take a poll right now, I probably won't see many people under the age of 30. Okay? One, Robert Gasperson Jr., yes. Two, three, four. Okay, I got you. You know, this is, this is, this is why I'm so conflicted, though, at the same time. You know when I knocked on your door? I sat at your kitchen table. I expressed, what is the future of our youth here? When they graduate from high school, what do we provide them? I am still going to move forward on Joe Ed. This will be an obstacle to that happening, though. This decision tonight creates an obstacle for you, an obstacle you're going to have to overcome. We're going to need your help in this. It, it can't be all our way, and it can't be all of certain factions' way. It's got to, we got to find a way to repair this, not only this town, this country. Would you agree that this country's at a crossroads here today, this, this time? And we are.
All right.
So, realize, realize that we're going to need your help to tackle that. And I hope that you want to continue this vision for me. Believe me, this is, this is not an easy decision for me. This is, I know it's not going to be an easy decision for you, Joe. But at the same time, I talked to my spiritual leaders all week. We brought up constitutional matters. We brought up what our agenda was, when we got, what things we got elected for. You haven't changed my heart. My heart is still in Swansboro. My heart is also with the under-30 group. I, when I started out, 20 years old, a wife, a child, and a Lance Corporal in the Marine Corps, guess where I lived? I lived in an apartment out in town, and, no, it wasn't a, it wasn't a detriment to me, it was a training ground for me, to learn how to pay bills, be responsible, be a parent. But I also realized, when I look at my daughter's eyes, I have an obligation to her and her generation as well. Don't forget them.
Okay, um, no, okay, now, this is a discussion.
I'm telling you why I'm reaching my decision right here. And I hope that you understand this, and I know there's some people out there that are going to be disappointed. I know there's people on this board that are going to be disappointed. But I'm asking for us to come together and heal, because I've seen some scars created by this, and I've seen some really ugly stuff, and I'm glad I don't have social media for that reason. I got a dog instead of social media. Right? And I've got a Bible, and that's where I spend most of my time. Okay? So with that, Pat? Jeff?
Okay, we're, we're still discussing. We, we go to a vote. Okay, Joe?
You know, I always have something to say. I'll start with this. Y'all have a real funny way of showing that, hey, you're with us, you're part of us, you are one of our people, when you call me on my phone and curse me out, or you post online that says that I'm a, a kiss-butt lieutenant colonel that couldn't lead myself out of a paper bag, you know? People have said these things to me, right? I got to tell you, you know, even though you voted me in, you don't know me. You don't know what my experiences are. So when you say things like that, it really, you know, makes me think that these people probably don't even like me. I don't know why they voted for me. But tonight has been a, a kind of a reckoning for me, you know? I see the, all the faces here, you know, and I, somebody did some, uh, calculating, I forget the young lady did it, uh, you know, there's X amount of people voted, and have 500 people on the petition, you know, I think I got 337 votes, but only 700 people, 730-some voted last time in the municipal election, so I got over 50% of the vote on that. So, you know, uh, that calculation didn't help me none. But, uh, and the fact that, uh, you know, Mr. Vanoy assured me that I would lose the election if I approved this tonight, um, you know, it's, sometimes you got to follow your heart. Sometimes you got to follow what you believe is the correct thing. And I know, I almost catch hell for this, but, uh, I don't think Flybridge is a bad thing for Swansboro. And when you look at it, and we heard the people that live in, uh, in Hubert, you know, I don't think anybody had to announce that, uh- I don't think anybody had to announce that, that, you know, about the, the lack of input to Swansboro, or that you look at the drain on the resources from Swansboro when we have to support all of Hubert. And that's not digging on you. You know, Daniel Cornell suggested that, that y'all incorporate, right? And, and he got beaten down by saying, "What, are you crazy? Then we'd have to pay taxes." That's a novel idea. We've got people in multi-million dollar homes out here underwater that don't pay taxes, you know? You know, the, you know, you don't hate somebody, hate those people, but, you know, I don't want you to hate nobody, and I want you to stop hating me. But, you know, at the, at the end of the day, the bills come due, folks, you know? Nothing's going down in price, you know? And anybody here had a, had to have their vehicle repaired lately? Those prices are crazy. Well, someone in our police department has to have a vehicle repaired, they're paying the same thing that y'all are paying, that I'm paying. When, you know, a building breaks, the, the cost of, to repair your structure, the price hasn't gone down. And we have a contractor, "Your price has gone down lately?" I don't think so, but the, you know, people say it's not about the money, you know? It's, the money's got to be in there somewhere, you know, it's got to be in our calculation. You know, I've, I've had an ongoing battle with a certain former commissioner about, you know, how we do our math on our phone. You know, I, I took his challenge, and I did some research, and I found a lot of good numbers, and somebody else up here, statistics can be manipulated, and what do they say? Figures lie, and liars figure, you know? But I think you all have affected my, my view on things, and we'll see how the board goes here. The other, the last thing I want to tell you all, real quick, is a guy that wants to audit my bank account, first off, I never listen near it, but I don't have, they haven't given me a damn thing, okay? Not a thing. And I personally take a front to it, when you accuse me and you, you try to tarnish my integrity, you know, that you say, "You must be on the take if you're supporting these people." I support a better Swansboro, a, someone that is not locked down to the, I don't want to say the, the old ways, because we've got a lot of new stuff in Swansboro, believe me, you know, when I hear a lot about the character of Swansboro. And then I look from, from Shore Drive West, and I see the, all the car lots, and the gas stations, and the pizza place, and the boat repair place, and all that doesn't seem like it's the character of Swansboro, you know, what we started with way, way back then. None of that is in the character of Swansboro. So, you know, that, that idea just never really sunk in with me. But, you know, I'm going to go with, with the majority of the board, and if we, if we pass this, we pass it. If we don't, so be it, you know? I believe, and I do believe that we're seeing the, the opinions of the city, the citizens, you know? So I got you. Message received, and we'll see where we go.
Thank you, Joe. Tammy?
A lot of people say, "Appreciate that y'all all come out and told us all your concerns." But I will say that everyone is not here, and on a day-to-day basis, there are folks that feel differently. They do support this. They're, no, they don't come. They don't want to come. They're intimidated by your white shirts.
Okay.
You've got some scary white shirts. Growth is coming, and it's our responsibility to manage it for the future. I think there's a big decision, but I think a lot of the questions have been answered. There are supporting facts to support this. This is, this is a rezoning of the land. Flybridge would still have many, many hurdles to cross. They have to, they have to make good on what they said they're going to do. And that's not today.
Okay. No, no, you, okay, okay, so discussion is over, we have a motion. Yeah, go right ahead.
Motion to approve, I think we probably need clarification, excuse me, disapprove. Both the resolution to the Complant Plan as well as the rezoning. You have suggested forms of action in your package. We have a resolution to not approve the Complant Amendment. Have, and resolution approved as well, but in respect to the rezoning, all that will take, you have no zoning ordinance being adopted, all that will take is simply a motion to deny the rezoning. But my point is, I think that Mr. Conway needs to be very clear that it is to both measure this approval of the Complant Amendment and also the rezoning.
So it would be for the CAMA, deny the CAMA Future Land Use Map Amendment and the zoning map amendment, is that what? Yep, yep, that's where I was, yep. So we have that motion on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? So we have three in favor, one against, and you...
I'm not sure I understood what the...
Okay, so, so we're voting on...
He's like...
So we're voting on both the CAMA Future Land Use Map Amendment and the zoning map amendment. It was all together in one...
I personally would rather see that modified to changing the CAMA land use map is one, and then the zoning is a separate one.
No, it's just a vote at this point.
Hmm?
Go ahead, Russ.
I wasn't clear on the motion. I mean, we have, we have indicated to you all in some, in memos we've sent, that it is permissible for the two actions to be consolidated, to be joined together. It is also permissible for there to be two motions, one to address the Complant Amendment and the other to address, address the rezoning. And we tried to provide sample forms of action. What we have not provided is a form of action where you might vote to not approve the Complant Amendment, but to approve the rezoning. That can be done. It is legally allowed by law for a, a local governing board to approve a rezoning, even if it is not consistent with the Complant Amendment. We've actually prepared something that's not in your package right now, that we do that if by any chance the motion prove, is approved to, to deny the Complant Amendment, but to approve the rezoning. It seems unlikely, but if that, that is not an illegal action, and we've got a form that you could use for that. But right now, I guess the question before you is whether you want to unify the two actions or not?
Yeah, that's what we, that was the motion, right?
And my motion was the denial of Resolution 2025 R11 and 2025 OE.
In other words, to deny the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, that is to, to adopt that resolution, disapproving the Complant Amendment, as long as we're clear on that, that's all I think is extremely important.
So you, you had both parts, is that what you made a motion on?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
So we have three in favor, one against?
Nope.
Okay.
You have to sort it out, you got, the vote was to deny, and you had three in favor.
Three in favor of denying, one against.
And then, you, did you say deny the...
All right, come on, this discussion's over, you got to vote, yeah.
Let me, let me make it clear for you, Joe. Joe, I voted to deny the rezoning, okay? I know, we can talk about it later...
It's not discussion, it's just a vote, it's all right.
I'll deny.
Okay, so it's four to deny and one for approval. So the motion to deny is passed. Okay, oh, refrain, please refrain from clapping. Hey, please refrain from, I'm so sorry, I got, I was thinking, sorry. All right, I apologize for that. Okay, so that's the business at hand for tonight, yeah, because we moved everything else to consent. So everything else on the agenda was moved to consent, so now we need a motion to adjourn. No, comments, comments, comments? Yeah, no, we, well, public comment, we only had one person, that was Ms. Corbett.
I congratulate the board on doing the right thing, and those who didn't, you'll serve your, get your day of justice. I think you do need to rewrite the land use plan. It is not clear on what needs to be done for this town's growth. I was, and Pat, me and Pat were on the original group on the planning board, that wrote this not-good, meant land use plan. And one of the reasons it was not good is because we had to use out-of-town, out-of-county, out-of-state, whoever they could find out there to come in and tell us how it was supposed to be written. And that's how this town does things. We would come up with suggestions, and we'd say, "Oh, no, that can't be done. The state won't allow you to do that." "Well, this is our town, damn it. We can do what we want to do." Then the state can deal with it.
All right, no clapping, please, please.
I've also just learned today that there is a petition, or a state law, or something that's trying to come into effect, that is going to take the ability to do what you've done tonight out of your hands and put it totally in the state's hands. That is wrong. You need to rise up in your white shirts again and oppose it. This is wrong. This is not what towns are all about. For the schools, there was a young woman here in the planning board meeting I attended the first time I came about this thing, and she came up here and told me, told us all about her three children in the schools here. She did an excellent presentation. She's got, I think, one at every grade level. I was a principal of Swansboro Middle School back in the 90s. We had an awful problem. They moved us from a school where there were wide halls and the children could move through and barely touch each other. When we got to the old high school building, and I don't want to say this other thing, Lee Sewell, I don't know if you remember, she almost single-handedly came in and got Swansboro High School built, because the town fathers would not do anything.
Okay, Ms. Corbett, is this...
I wanted to say one more thing.
Okay, one, one quick thing.
You are in the driver's seat on this traffic problem. The last mayor told me that it was already out the door, couldn't do anything about it. Well, you can't. You get those DOT people back into this building with the townspeople sitting here, telling them what the problems are, and get a bypass around Swansboro.
All right, thank you, ma'am. No clapping, no, wave your hands, wave your... Okay, so now we've got manager comments? None?
All that.
So, okay, so everything, that's what I thought originally, okay. All right, so now we're, now we need a motion to adjourn.
Sure move.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay, passes, man, okay.
That's right. Eddie, what's up? I'm in town. I work in July.
Well spoken, good job, good job, good job.